I'd like to call to order the June 4th meeting of the New Canaan Board of Education. We have in front of us the minutes from our May 21st and our May 30th meeting. If you could take a look at those and first for the May 21st meeting, if I could get a motion to approve those minutes. Brendan, second. Jen, all those in favor? Any abstentions? Two abstentions? Three abstentions? Three abstentions? Okay, thank you. Those are approved, majority of those who are here. Moving on to the May 30th special meeting minutes, if I could get a motion to approve those minutes. Sheri, second. Brendan, all those in favor? Unanimous for those in attendance, any abstentions? Yeah. You were there. Yeah, yeah. Okay. All right. Actually, I think you were there.
Yeah, she made part of that.
Yeah, you made part of the, you can, if you want to vote for those, you're okay with approving the special meeting? She's okay with approving the special? Okay. Thank you. If we could move on to the review and approval of tonight's agenda. You have before you tonight's agenda, if I could get a motion to approve. Sheri, second. Hazel, all those in favor? It's unanimous, thank you. Okay. Comments from the public. To ensure the public's right to be heard, the board has set aside time during the meeting for public comments. Two minutes will be allotted to each speaker and a maximum of 15 minutes to each topic. I see a number of members in the audience today, and so I just would ask if there are a number of you going to be speaking. If you organize yourself, I don't want anybody to be disappointed about not speaking. So if, you know, that would be like seven and a half of you can speak. And then if, if there are still more who would like to speak, we have another time at the end of the meeting. So if there's anyone who didn't get a chance to speak and would still like to speak, they can speak at the end of the meeting. So I'd also like to let everyone know that the board does not respond to public comment. So just so, if you ask us a question, we can't really answer it. But you will be, we will be talking about the start times later in our agenda, so there will be many board members asking questions, and I encourage you to stay and hear the presentation. So with that said, could I get the first person who would like to speak, and if you could say your name? Thank you.
Hi. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
There we go. My name is Heather Moore, and I have two children, a daughter in ninth grade and a son in sixth grade. I would like to urge our community to move school start times to 8:30 a.m. or later. On May 3rd, our community heard from three medical experts who explained why adequate sleep is critical for our teens' healthy development. I was there. I heard Dr. Craig Canapari, a pediatric sleep specialist from Yale, explain exactly how the teen's sleep cycle works. I learned that insufficient sleep caused by excessively early school start times can contribute to a whole host of problems for our teens, including an increased risk of anxiety, depression, and other mood disorders, substance abuse, and an increased risk of car accidents. I also learned that only 10% of schools within the United States start before 7:30 a.m. I found this statistic alarming. 90% of the country begins school later than 7:30 a.m. It seems to me that if 90% of our country can make a later school start time work, then so can we. I also heard Dr. William Flynn of New Canaan Pediatrics, a well-respected pediatrician for over 25 years. He described how he consistently notices that his patients from Wilton, who start school at 8:30 a.m., get more sleep than his New Canaan patients, who start school at 7:30 a.m. Finally, I listened to Tracy Masala from Silver Hill Hospital as she explained adolescent brain development and how sleep is crucial to proper brain function. She spoke about how sleep deprivation in teens leads to a chemical brain reaction resulting in an increased state of panic and irritability and decreased logical decision-making skills. In conclusion, I think it's fair to say that we must act now to ensure the long-term health of our children. As a community, it is time to show our kids that their health is more important to us than any hurdles we may face as we move to a later start time. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Anyone else? Go ahead.
My name is Hannah Moore, and I am a freshman at New Canaan High School. My experience at the high school so far has been fantastic. I take pride in my schoolwork, and I'm proud to say that I've earned high honors every quarter. I'm a featured high school artist and was a starter on the varsity softball team this year. I do my homework at a decent time every day, rarely working past nine. I know how important sleep is to me, so no late homework, no electronics after 9:30, and most nights in bed by 10:00. Unfortunately, I still can't fall asleep until around 11:30. I've tried going to bed earlier, but my body simply won't let me. So I accept the fact that I'll get six to seven hours of sleep a night during the school week. School mornings are the worst. My mom drives me to school every day so that I can sneak an extra 20 minutes of sleep, but that's still not enough. I'm too sleepy to eat breakfast, so I go to school with just a cup of coffee. I have dozed off on the hallway floor waiting for first period to start many times when my friends sit by with coffee of their own. The 7:30 a.m. start time has an incredibly negative effect on my overall health. Up until seventh grade, I averaged six absences per year. Since seventh grade and the beginning of the 7:30 a.m. start time, I've averaged over 15, more than double my previous amount. Missing school when I'm sick is not fun. Make-up homework and tests are stressful and time-consuming, and even though I try to make it to school whenever I can, sometimes it's just not possible. Yet I still manage to be a successful student, artist, and athlete, all while suffering the consequences of sleep deprivation. Imagine what we, the students, could achieve with a healthy, well-rested body? I'd like to think the sky's the limit. Thank you.
Thank you. [applause]
My name is Janie Conideris, and I'm a proud parent of two Saks middle school students. I have a daughter who's in eighth grade and a son who's in sixth. Overall, our experience with New Canaan Public Schools has been very positive. The one notable exception to this has been the transition to a 7:30 a.m. start time. For my daughter in eighth grade, interrupted sleep and no breakfast sums up her mornings. She used to wake up refreshed and eat a healthy breakfast with the family before heading to school. Now she's too tired to eat before school, and that means that she attends four classes before eating anything. Now, there are those who say that yanking kids out of bed half-asleep prepares them for the real world and toughens them up so that they won't become snowflake adults. And while I certainly can appreciate the concern that in certain circumstances, our children are over-coddled by well-intentioned parents, but that is not my rationale for wanting a later start time. I am not urging you, I am imploring you, please do not view this later-start-time movement as a snowflake issue, but rather view it for what it is, a health issue. The science is clear on the importance of sleep during adolescence. The sleep patterns of the teenage brain are different from those of young children and those of adults. The snowflake argument just doesn't hold water to the science. We know that sleep affects both physical health and mental health. We don't suspect it, we know it. It does not make sense to take away a much-needed hour of sleep from the morning so that our kids can get out of school at 2:00 p.m. Our children, let's put our children first and make their health a priority. I know that we can work together creatively to find solutions. Thank you.
Karen Camp, and I speak for my husband Steve and my sons Jason and Brian.
Dr. Letzzi and the members of the Board of Education, my family and I are highly in favor of changing school start times to align more closely with teen sleep cycles due to the overwhelming scientific evidence demonstrating that sleep affects physical health, mental health, and both athletic and academic success. When our two sons entered seventh grade and began a schedule of school starting at 7:30 a.m., they had to wake up at 6:15 to catch the 6:50 a.m. bus. They lost over an hour per day of their previous sleep, amounting to over six hours lost each week. By the end of each school week, we noticed their behavior, attitude, and aptitude was markedly decreased. Our older son, who just completed freshman year of college, has struggled with migraines since elementary school. The early school schedule for six years in New Canaan has presented an enormous obstacle to the sleep hygiene emphasized by his neurologist. My younger son in 10th grade longs for the days when his schedule has a first period free, so he can get an extra precious hour. It happens only once or twice each cycle for only half the year. As an athlete, he prioritizes conditioning and training. Sleep is one of the critical ingredients for his optimum performance. He asked me to tell you that he feels that lack of sleep increases his stress and prevents him and his peers from fully engaging in school with a positive attitude. I myself am a teacher, and the cognitive science is clear. Students learn better when they are well-rested and not sleep deprived. The brain simply needs sleep for knowledge acquisition, consolidation, and retrieval. If we in New Canaan aspire to provide the highest quality of education for the students in our care, this is something we must do and not be a latecomer to make changes when our peer districts are already putting sleep-aware schedules into place. Yes, there are some logistical and financial issues that need to be addressed, but the challenges to implement this change are hardly insurmountable. Shouldn't we be willing to make a decision that will have profound benefits for over 1,500 students in our town? As our school leaders, you do many things to enable our schools to be the best they can be. You invest in great teachers, administrators, and resources for excellence, and not just good enough. Unfortunately, the current school start schedule is worse than that. It actually puts our kids at a disadvantage, akin to having them starting a race way behind the starting gate.
Karen, let's, to me-
I urge you to move forward with a plan to enact this change for our kids as soon as possible. It is one of the most impactful things you can do to enhance our students' education, overall health, and success. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
[applause]
Hi, I'm Gabby Beecher. I have a ninth grader at New Canaan High School and a sixth grader at Saks. We live in a community that seeks every opportunity to give our children a leg up, whether it's the wide offering of AP, honors, and specialty courses, expert coaching in almost any sport you can think of, or professional-quality facilities in most areas of the arts. This community has clearly shown that we want the best for our kids. This is why I'm so puzzled when medical experts, backed by decades of research and real science, tell us that starting school later will have a positive and profound impact in our kids' academic performance, athletic performance, and most importantly, their emotional health. And we seem to do everything we can to ignore these experts. I know that there are challenges to changing start times and likely costs involved, but I also know that when our community has determined that our kids would benefit from expanded facilities at Saks or upgraded fields for our athletes, we've risen to meet these challenges because we believed that our kids would benefit. The issue of teen sleep is backed by serious scientific research from the American Academy of Pediatrics, an organization that doesn't take positions lightly. I was really pleased to see Dr. Letzzi and Dr. Corenti and some members of the Board of Education at the recent panel where Dr. Canapari spoke, but I was utterly confused by the survey I received from the district about adolescent sleep. It seemed like the survey missed so many key points, allowing almost no room to include any explanation, and then asked some questions that appeared to have no relevance for our district. I'd like to ask this board to pull together a group of board members, parents, and adolescent health professionals to really dig and determine just how critical a role sleep cycles play in a teenager's health. Only then can we make a clear and educated decision as a community. Thank you.
[applause] Time for two more?
Hi, I'm Ipek Kaya Savasoblo. I have a seventh grader at Saks and a fourth grader at West School. Numerous scientific studies show the importance of sleep for teenagers. Our seventh grader's school bus arrives at 6:35 a.m. in the morning. In order for him to be able to make the 6:35 bus, he needs to wake up before 6 o'clock. He needs to go to bed at a very early time to make sure he gets enough sleep, which is so vital for kids his age. Currently, his workload is light enough so that he can finish all his work and go to bed early, but as he moves to high school and gets a heavier school workload, he may not be able to do so. My question to the district is, is there any evidence that it is beneficial for my seventh grader to trade an hour of sleep for an hour of after-school time? Is there a child-focused strategy behind the 7:30 start, or is it just an accident of busing or other factors? Thank you.
Thank you. [applause]
Hi, my name is Kate Reeves, and I'm a junior at New Canaan High School. I thought I'd talk a little bit about just what I've observed, not even the scientific facts, but the day-to-day experiences I go through as a junior in high school with a start time at 7:30. So when I was a freshman, my bus came at 6:40, and with the school year from September to June, or late August to June, most of the school year is dark at 7:30 in the morning. And I just, I just didn't really understand the logic in being awake when it's dark outside. I felt that that was the world's way of telling us it was nighttime and we should be asleep. And even biological plants, like biological organisms as small as plants understand a circadian rhythm, which is when a certain amount of light or certain periods of dark has reached them, they are capable of flowering, and without that period reached, they are incapable of flowering. So you can imagine that organisms as complex as humans have an even higher dependence on that circadian rhythm of a sleep schedule and of relationship with light. And there have been lots of studies that have proven that teenagers specifically because of the hormone flow can't fall asleep till around 11, as Hannah mentioned, and then need to be able to wake up a little bit later. And I think that's a real misconception, is that if we push the start time back, kids will end up staying up later. And even my brother, who is the exception himself, he's somewhere doing tech stuff here, tonight, we were having a debate at the family dinner table, and he goes, "But, Kate, if you give a moose a muffin..." And I said, "Spencer, what does that mean?" He goes, "Well, if you, if you push the start time back, then kids will just stay up later." And contrary to Spencer, who finds a way to go to bed at 9:00 every night and wake up at 5:00 every morning, I think most teachers, most teenagers don't really work like that. For me personally, it's easiest to concentrate later at night, and I think the workload itself isn't something that we're willing to sacrifice as a community, and so we need to start finding other ways to address the lack of sleep, and that would be pushing back the start time. Thank you so much. Thanks, Kate.
We have time for one more speaker?
Hi, this is, my name is Bob Evans. I've got three children, one in high school, one in seventh grade, and one in fifth grade. So two in Saks and one at the high school. So we're living in a human, human laboratory for circadian rhythm. It appears that my 11-year-old, she goes to bed at 9:30, reads about 10 minutes, and is fast asleep. My newly-turned 13-year-old daughter now is taking the sleep habits of my 16-year-old son, up till 12, up till 12:30, and they just can't go to sleep. And, you know, you read about the circadian rhythm and the concept of it, we're living, we're living through it, and it's, it's reality. And then the rude awakening comes at 6:15, and we wake up my son and daughter to catch a 6:40 bus. I take them up to the bus stop, and I call it the bus of zombies. So everyone's sitting there by the window, making looks, wondering what they're doing up at this hour. So, you know, we're not going to fight the circadian rhythm, I think we all, we all discussed that quite a bit, so I think that's, that's a given. So that's covering that topic. The other topic I'd like to talk about is the survey. So I don't know if you got any comments from parents or students, but I understand that the students took the same survey as the parents. I personally took a lot of time to do that survey, and I found it confusing, ambiguous. I had to reread the questions three or four times. You know, if you start later, are you less likely or more likely to have an after-school activity? So most people gave up on that question at the second sentence. And that, that's the feedback I'm getting, I'm not sure if the board got that same kind of feedback. I'm in the IT industry, and there's a term called garbage in, garbage out. So, you know, I would, I know we're going to discuss the findings of the survey, but I don't know if anyone else found it confusing, but I did.
Bob, it's two minutes.
Last comment from a eighth grader, friend of my daughter's. I said, "What did you think of the survey?" And we can all talk here, right? She said it was stupidly complicated. So thank you for your time, and I hope we consider that.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak about a different topic outside of this start school? Okay. Seeing none, we will move on to the next part of our agenda, and reports and recognition. The first item is our CAE student awards. Dr. Letzzi.
Tonight is a packed agenda. We begin with some recognition and acknowledgement of two really special students I'll talk about in a moment, and then a couple of our retirees. Let me start with the CAE Student Leadership Awards. The mission of the Connecticut Association of Boards of Education, CAE, is to assist local and regional boards of ed in providing high-quality education for all Connecticut children through effective leadership. CAE is passionate about strengthening public education through high-performing transformative local school board and superintendent leadership teams that inspire success for each student. The CAE Student Leadership Awards program is designed to honor Connecticut high school students who exhibit exemplary leadership skills. One male and one female student from each high school in a CAE member district are eligible to receive the CAE Student Leadership Award. The leadership skills this prestigious award looks for are student's willingness to take on challenges, capacity to make difficult decisions, a concern for others, an ability to work with others, a willingness to commit to a project, diplomacy, an ability to understand issues clearly, and the dedication to honor a commitment. A committee of teachers, counselors, and administrators met together to consider the best candidates for this year's CAE Award, and it became clear that our two award winners tonight best exemplify all that CAE is looking to honor through the award. So our first awardee tonight is Olivia Buckley. When I sat with Olivia a few weeks ago to congratulate her on the award and to get to know her a bit, I was instantly struck by her thoughtful nature. As I learned about her commitment to help others, especially those less fortunate to her, than her, I was inspired and impressed. By the end of our conversation, I was urging her, and actually more likely, more like begging her, to become a teacher in the years ahead. This young adult has so much to offer the world, whether she's teaching or doing anything else, I have no doubt she'll help to make it a better place. When she was younger, Olivia was a member of the U.S. team in synchronized swimming and even competed in the Junior Olympics. I shared with her that once when I was in college, I filled in for a friend who was on the water polo team. I spent the whole time just praying not to drown. As a synchronized swimmer, her stamina must have been tremendous, and the hours of dedicated practice were undoubtedly grueling. But nevertheless, she preserved for several years, but ultimately decided to end her competitive endeavor since it left too little time for academic preparation, and she wanted to become more involved with opportunities that high school has to offer. Looking at her resume and talking to her for a while, it's obviously she certainly took, it's obvious she certainly took advantage of all that high school has to offer. Olivia is a leader in our Caring Crew Club, which is an after-school program for students with special needs and the crew. The crew members provide fellowship, encouragement, and support to students while participating in a variety of sports, cooking, and recreational activities. Olivia is also president of our Autism Awareness Club, and she works with a YMCA with special needs children and spends summers as a camp counselor. Her experience at the Y began as a volunteer simply because she wanted to help others. According to Olivia's counselor, she's compassionate and always available to help a student in need. She's extremely well-organized, is a strong self-advocate. Olivia shows great maturity in recognizing her goals and understanding how to achieve them. She's hard-working in the classroom, on the sports field, and at her jobs. And importantly, she's genuine in her dealings with peers and staff, and as a result, has forged many strong relationships. Olivia is a high achiever across all disciplines, and she has increased her, the academic rigor in her classes each and every year as her experience has grown as a student and a learner. Self-possessed, generous, committed, and driven, Olivia has the ability to make all people, regardless of their own strengths and abilities, feel comfortable, accepted, and successful. She is quite an impressive young adult. And as she heads off to Dickinson in the fall, she brings with her such knowledge, experience, wisdom, and kindness, I have no doubt she'll continue to excel in all that's ahead. Please join me in congratulating Olivia as one of this year's CAE Awards.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
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 And now I get to talk about Will.
Will Dooley is our second CAE Award winner this year. Will has a chance every day to set the tone for New Canaan High School, not because he's so well-regarded or because his gregarious nature makes him very popular amongst all of his peers. No, Will literally gets to set the tone each day because he hosts the daily announcements and picks the songs that'll be playing school-wide each day. So when I asked him, how does he choose the song and what, what songs does he like to play? He shared with me a fondness for 80's music, which, growing up in the 80's, I'm still very confused by.
[laughter]
And he said he likes that, since he likes to surprise people with older retro songs from time to time. So I guess my music is retro. But truly, after spending some time with Will, it became very clear, the high school's lucky to have him in this role every day. He truly puts thought into it and tries, works hard to make the school the best place it can be. Without a doubt, Will is a star in the making. He's witty, enthusiastic, and his well-earned self-assurance is apparent whenever he's performing on stage, especially in front of a packed auditorium, which he experienced often during his time at NCHS. When you see Will on stage, his energy and charisma just shine through, and as an audience member, they create contagious enjoyment of his work. Will's earned lead roles in many of our award-winning productions, and he devotes countless hours of his time to both academics and theater productions. When we were talking, I asked him about memorizing the lines. What he shared with me was no secret, it was hard work, repetition, repetition, repetition. What probably is a secret, though, is that sometimes, especially during audition time, he would catch himself in math class saying the lines over and over, and sometimes in all of his classes, sort of repeating the lines. But amazingly, speaking of Will's commitment, his grades never suffered, and we all benefited for years from his great performances. Through experiences in drama, Will's discovered who he is as an artist. Additionally, he's learned to see himself as a scholar, a leader, and an intellectual. Will's a history buff at heart, a poised conversationalist, and a conscientious student who enjoys learning for its own sake. He's an individual, and he brings energy and enthusiasm to every endeavor. Speaking to him about his experiences, it's impossible to come away uninspired. As you can tell, Will's highly motivated, he immerses himself in his academics, and he brings a spirited-stage presence and vocal precision to theater and sometimes to the classroom. He's strong in all academic areas, is an analytical thinker, and seeks deep understanding of concepts. He's also quite comfortable engaging in high levels of debate and sharing impassioned viewpoints. So through the years, Will's been recognized and nominated for various awards for his outstanding performances and collective contribution to theater. He's very dedicated, and has filled his summers with pre-college musical theater programs such as CAP-21 at NYU and M-Pulse at the University of Michigan, two of the very best programs nationwide. Will also believes in giving back, as you can see by his volunteerism at his church, where he sings, lectures, and gives communion. He also assisted with storm relief efforts by enhancing a homeless shelter and has participated in other various mission trips. As you can see, Will's an outstanding candidate for this year's CAE Student Leadership Award. He's eager and excited to begin next year at Boston College, and it's quite obvious to me, he's bringing all of what it takes to be successful with him when he arrives. It's my great pleasure and honor to introduce the board to this year's CAE Student Leadership Award, William Dooley.
Congratulations. Thank you. Congratulations.
I'm just going to ask that we take a very brief intermission so we can take a couple of pictures with families.
[laughter]
All right. [laughter] Just, oh, okay, okay. Um...
It's still on film. So they can't see what's going on. It's nice. It's brilliant.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
I'm just going to ask that we take a very brief intermission so we can take a couple of pictures with families.
All right.
Outside, especially. Why don't we do it here?
Outside.
Something in the wall?
It's good.
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 I have rehearsals.
So the next item on our agenda is the recognition of retiring staff. Dr. Lettsi.
Yes, it is my great pleasure to also recognize some of our retiring staff this evening. You know, people ask me why we have this meeting in the first, why we recognize retiring staff the first meeting in June, not the last meeting in June. And it's generally because when we start the school year, we're not at school on the last meeting of June. But because of snow days and other things this year, you know, we are, obviously, as we go through. So we use this first meeting in June for the CAE Award winner, and we also take some time to recognize people who've dedicated so much to our students and to our district, you know, as they transition and retire. So unfortunately, a few folks are unable to be with us tonight because of other responsibilities, teaching engagements, and other family responsibilities. So, but I do want to just mention them and at least say a couple of words about them, even though they're not here. So we'll begin with Margaret Peggy DeSantis, who is an art teacher with us for 15 years over at East School. Peggy's contributed to the beauty and color of East School throughout her art-filled years. Not only do the walls come to life with vibrant artwork at the Arts Evening each spring, but Peggy orchestrates collaborative groups of students in her art classes all year long to create beautiful murals of various themes. She has a cadre of fourth graders who volunteer before school every year to be her art helpers, as she has inspired their love of art and generously offers her time to let them take on leadership roles in creating and displaying art in the school. Diligent in her efforts to be a true leader in the art department and a team player, Peggy may be best known for willingly supporting her fellow teachers. She's always described as hard-working, dedicated, creative professional. She takes time to assess her students and focus on the positive behavior. She's an active member of the East community and in the arts and learning communities of the district and the town. We appreciate all of her contributions to our students, staff, and families. Everyone's happy for Peggy's new life to begin, but she will be sorely missed. Congratulations to Peggy DeSantis. The next retiree, again unable to be here, is Joseph Graham, who is a math teacher for us over at Saks for 38 years in the district. Joseph began his career at New Canaan High School and later joined Saks, where he's taught in sixth, seventh, and eighth grade. Joseph led the middle school in the very early days of what we now call STEM, when he taught mini-courses of math, science, and technology to all students who rotated through various program learning modules. In another, well, at a time when GPS was a new technology, Joseph's students were outside using probes to locate longitude and latitude coordinates from a satellite. He has a reputation as a teacher who instructs the whole child, who strives to connect with his students, and who's made an art of understanding the adolescent learner. He's studied innovation in curriculum design and the efficacy that relevance has with students while learning a math program. This interest in personalized learning has been shared with his colleagues and has helped students acquire mastery skills within his classroom. After a long career of working with high school and middle school students, Joseph's looking forward to new opportunities at the postgraduate level. We wish him well in all that's ahead and thank him for his many years of service with us at New Canaan. Rob Polley, who's a technology integrator with us over at East, was unable to come tonight. But Rob has been a certified teacher with us for 20 years. But he's actually been in the district for 22 years, because he started as a seventh-grade aide over at Saks, and then he became a teaching assistant at East, where he transitioned into the technology integrator role and never wanted to leave. Rob's an insightful educator, a skilled critical thinker, and problem solver. He's known as a team player, and he always demonstrated thorough preparation, energy, and enthusiasm. Rob has been a great booster for East School and for New Canaan. He's always been willing to pitch in and help wherever it's needed. He was involved with such things as the Innovation Night, Tech Training Institute, PD and Staff Development Team, the Tetra Data Project Support Team, Instructional Leadership Team, the New Teacher Orientation Building Crisis Committee. Rob was always there whenever you needed anything done. When the East Library transformed into the East Library Media Center, the devices Rob was able to use with his students shifted from desktops to laptops and iPads. Add to that smartboards, green screens, clickers, air servers, NearPod, QR codes, and everything else that's changed in technology over the last 20 years, and you quickly see the amount of innovation that Rob was responsible for and responsible for navigating over at East. He brought coding to East students with Scratch well before it became a part of our curriculum, and he's instilled in students an appreciation of the importance of practice as they work to grow their skills through the years. Rob has been a familiar face at community events that brings East staff and families together. From his support of East Movie Night to organizing an East rowing team to charity walks for breast cancer and more, Rob is always there. And thanks to his love of swimming and his partnership with the New Canaan community, countless students have benefited from his teaching. Rob has always endeavored to make learning fun for his students and to support the hard work of his colleagues in the classroom. We thank Rob for his years of dedicated service and wish him all the very best in his future endeavors. Colleen Durkin is also retiring. She's been with us for 18 years as a math teacher over at Saks, and just today, something came up and she was unable to join us. And she sends her regrets. Colleen taught in the seventh and eighth grade math programs at Saks and is viewed by all as a consummate middle school educator. She's widely considered one of the most dedicated and talented teachers around. One of her most notable traits is her ability to keep the students at the center of her instruction, and she's always willing to go above and beyond the call of duty. Colleen's a master teacher. She was an early proponent of differentiation and personalized learning, which she just did as good practice well before they had fancy names. She meets the needs of all the learners in her classroom and helps students to see how what they are learning is connected to the real world. Colleen sets high expectations for her students and truly believes each and every one of them can and will be successful. By knowing that she has faith in them, students trust Ms. Durkin, and her enthusiasm for students, math, and teaching is truly infectious. Colleen's been equally adept at contributing to her colleagues' practice. Within the Saks Math Department, Colleen has shared her observations and experimentations with individualized learning so that the whole department can continue to consider new methods and approaches. She's always willing and able to help a colleague by sharing her knowledge, experience, and wisdom. Colleen's reputation reaches outside of the school walls, and parents often call the school to request Colleen as a teacher. Fortunately for her, we don't permit parents to pick their teachers, because if we did, she'd likely be teaching over 350 students a year, although I don't think she'd complain if we asked her to. Colleen's reputation's so strong, in fact, parents even have a nickname for her. They call her the Durkinator, because there's never been a math challenge she couldn't overcome with a child. Students, parents, colleagues, and the administration know Colleen is a teacher who gives her her whole self until she is satisfied that her work is the very best it can be each and every day. She's warm and funny and passionate about math and her mathematicians, her students. Colleen's innate kindness, sense of humor, and intellectual curiosity have been a staple at Saks and will be sorely missed. While we will miss her, we certainly wish her all the very best, and we're grateful for the 18 excellent years we had together with Colleen in our district. Thank you, Colleen. Now I get to talk about people who are here. First, retire after 13 years over at South School in our Special Education Department, we have Ms. Carol Dacey. This year, Carol served as a special education instructional leader over at South. Throughout her time with us, she's worked with grade levels K through 4 and has formed strong bonds with all of her students. Carol loves her students, and she is very dedicated to them and to their families. She's also made a habit of working with several of the same longtime special education teaching assistants for many years and has formed strong professional partnerships with them, including conducting many professional learning sessions to help them stay updated about how to best support students. As a matter of fact, Carol, I've heard that the favorite part of every day for you is scheduling your teaching assistants every morning. Not really. But truly, she's witty and has a great sense of humor, two of the many things we're going to miss about Carol in the future. As is typical of her caring and thoughtful nature, Carol often included yoga and other relaxation techniques in her teaching to help students get ready for learning or to relax after a learning session. She's worked with many wiggly students over the years, and she understands the importance of incorporating movement into her time with them. As a matter of fact, students can often be seen in the hallway doing wall push-ups, stretches, and even walking a full-length number line as a way to help them understand concepts. But don't kid yourself into thinking that Carol's a new-age trendy follower. She prefers paper and pencil to keyboards and screens every day of the week. Carol goes above and beyond in her efforts to keep parents informed of their child's progress and establishes positive trusting relationships with them as a result. She's insightful, productive, and consistent, and has been a wonderful teacher and colleague over at South these past 13 years. While we're going to miss her, I'm confident her grandchildren, both born this past spring, will be the beneficiaries of her newfound freedom. Carol, thank you for your service to the children and parents of New Canaan, and we wish you all the very best in the years ahead. ago as our PE teacher and football coach. And you may know that Lou Marinelli is Connecticut's winningest high school football coach of all time. What you may not know, however, is that when he took over as New Canaan's head coach in 1981, he inherited a team that had just struggled through three winless seasons. That very first season, he led the Rams to a 4-5 finish. Flash forward to 2018, now in his 37th season as head coach for the Rams, Lou's won his 332nd career game, which makes him the winningest coach in Connecticut high school football history. In March of this year, Lou received the prestigious Gold Key Award from the Connecticut Sports Writers Alliance. Besides his dozen state crowns, Coach has also led the Rams to five FCAC championships and has been named FCAC Coach of the Year six times. He was named the Walter Camp Football Foundation Connecticut Coach of the Year in 2008 and was a national Coach of the Year finalist in 2007 and 2010. In 2009, he was inducted in the Connecticut High School Coaches Association Hall of Fame. Of course, Lou wouldn't say that he won his 332nd career game or that these recognitions and awards are all about him. Instead, Coach would do what he always does, and he would give the credit to his players, to his other coaches, and to his good fortune in being here in New Canaan. Despite all of the well-deserved accolades that Lou receives, he never loses sight of the reason we do this work in the first place, for the kids. As a matter of fact, just looking at the sidelines of a New Canaan Rams football game gives some insight into Lou's philosophy and approach. Coach believes that every kid who wants to play for the Rams should be welcomed onto the team. Regardless of playing time, Coach has shown over and over again that the commitment and discipline that football teaches students can provide lifelong lessons for them in their development into young adults. Coach's compassion and care for his players is a gift that is unrelated to a player's talent or athletic stature. Truly, he just loves kids. As a physical education teacher, Lou cares about and is interested in each and every one of his students. They enjoy talking to him as well, and he genuinely enjoys getting to know them and interacting with them in positive and healthy ways. For reasons I'm not sure I fully understand, one of Lou's favorite lessons in PE is archery, which he helped introduce to the department long ago. But if I had to guess, I'd say he enjoys it because archery is something that everyone, regardless of shape, or size, or strength, can excel at, and Lou relishes the opportunity to witness and celebrate success for every one of his students. Along with his success on the field, Lou is just as well-known among his players and families and students for his empathy and interest in them as individuals off the field. So I'm happy to say, while Lou is retiring from the classroom, fortunately for all of us, he's remaining on as our head football coach, and we look forward to many more years of Rams football under his leadership. As everyone on the team knows, Rams for life. You're stuck with us for a long time. Thank you, Coach, for your many years of great service to our students in the classroom, and we look forward to continuing to see you on the field for many more. Congratulations. but could never do that. Greg Macedo has been our principal over at Saks Middle School for the last 25 years as part of a career that has spanned 39 years in education. Recently, Craig has earned praise from all quarters for his strategic planning and quick thinking, especially as he's made dozens of accommodations for the latest Saks renovation and expansion in order to keep Saks thriving while being consistently over-enrolled for years. Of course, the skills were well-earned, since it wasn't the first time he and his team had to balance a construction project while keeping a school open. From 1997 to 2000, there is a Saks construction project that doubled the square footage of the building from 100,000 to 200,000 square feet, added a new library, new cafeteria, new music wing, and 30 new classrooms, all in preparation for the fifth grade's arrival from the three elementary schools. Greg's experience from this construction project was invaluable during the most recent effort. Whenever something strange or unusual came up, Greg was always there with a background, with a history, and able to problem-solve whatever problems came up. Working with perseverance and tenacity, Greg's vision for the educational specifications significantly enhanced the overall quality of Saks School, and his impact permeates school-wide. To his students, Greg is a wise leader who isn't afraid to laugh at himself, as they get to laugh with him every year when he dresses up during Spirit Week. When asked, the students told us they see him as cool, caring, and committed. Another student said, "He's the coolest principal ever." And a third in that middle school vernacular said, "He's a real bro." Real bro. In a positive spirit, they like to try to emulate... In a positive spirit, they like to try to emulate his deliberate phrasing in the morning announcements. "He takes about ten minutes in between each phrase," they said. And obviously, they're actually listening to what he says, so congratulations, Greg. You figured out how to get middle schoolers to listen to the announcements. Well done. Clearly, the students see him as someone who really cares about them and that's such an important part of being a school leader. Parents rightfully see Greg as an experienced educator who's uncompromising in his principles and unconditionally committed to every child. He demonstrates his commitment whenever a parent or a child comes to him for help or guidance or on the rare occasions when a middle school child might make an unwise decision about something. Whenever that happens, Greg's always there to help teach the child, to guide the parents, and to partner with everyone, understanding that mistakes happen and with a goal of helping the child to learn and grow stronger as a result. To his staff, Greg is an experienced mentor and guide who's always available to help them through tough challenges, to facilitate their growth, and to provide opportunities for new learning. In his twenty-five years as principal, Greg has had a hand in hiring just about every adult working in that building and the effect is obvious. Greg has surrounded himself with professionals who love kids like he does and the care and culture at Saks represents his values and beliefs, that schools should be places where all kids feel welcome, cared for, safe, and connected, truly where schools are special places on behalf of the children in our care. To me personally, when I arrived in New Canaan, Greg was one of the first to reach out to me with congratulations and offers of assistance. Immediately, I found him to be thoughtful and kind, wise and courageous, centered and committed. Whenever important decisions have to be made, I've learned to always try to have Greg in the room. He's an active listener, a deep thinker, and a clear communicator and I always listen to and often learn from his feedback and advice. As the principal of Saks Middle School, Greg essentially oversees two schools and the largest middle school in Connecticut, yet he never once complained about it. Quite the opposite, in fact, Greg has always demonstrated great pride in being Saks's principal, which you can see by the way his face lights up whenever he speaks of his staff, his students, or the entire Saks and New Canaan community. Working alongside Greg Macedo has been a highlight of my career that I'll always cherish and I know that I'm joined by hundreds of colleagues and thousands of students in wishing him the very best in the years ahead. There aren't many who can say that they went out on top, Derek Jeter, Barry Sanders, Michael Jordan, and now we have to add to that list Greg Macedo. On behalf of the entire New Canaan community, thank you, Greg, for everything you've done to make the world a better place. It's worked and we're all so much better off thanks to your inspirational efforts these past twenty-five years. We ask the retirees to come up for a quick picture? Did Carol?
I guess so.
Yeah. You might have noticed. It's just weird and it's just the two of them.
I know.
It's funny.
All right. So moving on to the next item on our agenda, the school start and end times discussion with Dr. Letzey.
We're not done?
I know, you've been busy today.
Do you need a refill?
Thank you. All right. So it is a busy meeting and it is my pleasure to give what I, what I think will be a relatively quick overview of some information data that we've recently received and then hopefully have some conversation together, you know, with the board and members of the administrative team if, you know, eyes of questions arise as we go. But I wanted to give a quick history and I know that we've talked a bit about this process for the last year. As a matter of fact, the Board of Education goal is centered around, I'm doing some research and reporting back to the Board of Education about the school start and end times. So with, I thought that, I'll do a quick synopsis, it's a thick packet, but I'll run through it quickly, but I wanted to share with you this preliminary look at the data that we've received, the results that we've gotten. And while I think there, well, I've never taken a survey that I thought was perfect. I think that we do have some information that will be helpful and I think it's also important to note that there was never an intention for the survey that went out to be definitive, do we do something or don't we do something, should the board recommend a change or shouldn't the board recommend a change? No, it was really looking to capture some preliminary information from a variety of stakeholder groups so that it could help inform whatever the process is going to be going forward. I felt that it would, would be, well, I thought it'd be unfair, truly, to put into such a survey, a yes-no type question, should we change the school start times or shouldn't we? I thought that it would be, well, it wouldn't make much sense to do that prior to having the opportunity to educate the community, the board, and others about some of the research and some of the findings and some of the science. So certainly, nothing's perfect. The survey was not the same for different groups because there were, the questions were tailored depending upon the response that people gave, although, you know, the feedback is always helpful. So to hear that some of the phrasing seemed confusing for folks is helpful if and when you continue to move forward in this or any other way and surveys are put together, you know, we always do our best to try to be as clear as possible. And, you know, we've been working with a group that has worked with a few other school districts and that was the basis for, you know, that tool itself, that device that was shared. So, you know, we do our best with this and continue moving on. So tonight, again, I just thought I'd hit a couple of things and open for conversation. I do want to thank all the people that came out tonight to hear and to be a part of this because I do believe in the research that I've done and last week, Mr. Ritchie, or last meeting, Ed said, said it well, that it is a community decision. You know, one of the things, and I, last, the worst thing to do in a presentation is jump to, you know, your, your ending in the very beginning, but one of the pieces of learning for me as I've gone through and done this research is for this to work, to do something like this well, whatever this is, stay the same or make a change, it has to be a decision and a conversation and a reflection of the wishes of the community at whole, at whole, in whole. So the interest in it is important. Transparency is important and I think we have been, and I'll share some different communication pieces we've had, we've been trying to be very systematic and thoughtful in our approach to learning about this and generating some, you know, understanding to be able to share and developing a process with which to move forward. So again, I'll move through this as quickly as I can. You're welcome to stop me at any time. I'm only going to hit a couple of highlights. I'm certainly not going to talk about all of the data that's on all of these charts because we also, we only received this a week ago. So we have not had the opportunity to disaggregate the results in the ways that we'd like to. For instance, I'd like to, we did have the high school folks take it, we had the middle school students take it, we also had parents from all different levels take it. We haven't yet had the opportunity to disaggregate the results by the level at which the children go, whether it's elementary, middle, or high, from the parents. So I want to have the opportunity to disaggregate the data and take a look at that. We haven't had that time. That's a good summer project, I think, given that we're in June, but to go through. So my own sort of research and learning around this, you know, we've heard about school start times, it's something that folks talk about, but it really became much more meaningful for me at a conference back last April, about a year ago, which was in Washington DC, which was Adolescent Sleep Health and School Start Times. And at that conference, it was very well put together and there were a variety of experts that came together and essentially they were given thirty minutes each, twenty minutes to talk, ten minutes for questions, and they ran through their topics of expertise. And it was really interesting that so many of them were referencing each other in their research. So you learned quickly that there is, there's a body of research that's growing and that the folks that were at this conference truly were the national experts and they all sort of knew each other and worked through. Person who was quoted probably more than anybody else was this one, Walstrom, right? Last name Walstrom. And so what I've done, and I want to be very clear, I didn't create most of these slides, right? These were shared with us from the DC conference and then others were developed by Hanover. So I'm not, I certainly don't want to put, put these up as my own slides, but I want to share them with you. And so I tried to leave the borders and leave the information there just so you know where it came from. But what Walstrom has done and in this presentation, things that I learned about, she looked at the various stakeholders and talked about the impact of changing start times on each of them. And when she looked at students, she talked about this, these are the, this is what the research says happens when you can make start times later for kids. She talked about longer sleep, less depression, substance use, and crashes. She also talked about academic effects on students, better attendance, reduced tardiness, and improved grades. So very compelling research that she had there, but she continued to talk about the effect on teachers, right? Because they are an important stakeholder in this. And talked, more than half said students aren't falling asleep in classes often, you can see these things here. The last bullet's an important one, that elementary and secondary teachers note schedule changes affect their personal lives, but most say the benefit with students is worth it. And that will become important as we talk about some of the teacher results from the survey that did go out because you'll hear some of the concerns that they have. And so it's important to talk to districts that have gone through this to look at what were the concerns initially and how did the folks that were concerned feel about it now that the change is there. She also looked at the administration, parents, and the community and talked about what principal's feedback, parents' feedback, and the community's feedback and you can see that there and it's all, all positive. And then, of course, it was a very data-driven conference. There were, there was lots of conversation about the circadian rhythm, the suprachiasmatic nucleus, the, you know, lots of things that while I learned a little bit about, I'm certainly not the person to be talking to about all of that. So there's more research out there that, about these things and the biology, but I think, you know, obviously our parent community that's been with the board, been sending emails to the board and speaking at the board, has done quite a bit of research and I want to share with you that I concur with the findings that they found, that they've shared, you know, that the circadian rhythm, from what I learned at this conference, in teenagers, does shift for many teenagers, not all, but they say for, you know, more than not. It does shift so that students do find themselves having a more difficult time falling asleep at the times that they were, were able to when they were younger and they do peg it at around eleven o'clock or so. And then they also shared that it's the deep sleep that's the restorative sleep and for teenagers, when they go to sleep that late, you know, that deep restorative sleep really happens around five to seven or so AM. That's when they're in those deepest phases of sleep. So there's, with early start times, they, the research shows, you're sort of hitting students a couple of ways. So it is powerful scientific findings that folks are putting together, relatively new field in sort of looking at this, to my understanding, but certainly compelling. Some summary information here, you know, we'll talk about the problems associated with sleep loss and they do talk about those school start times as a driver to that because obviously that's five days a week, that's what students are doing. While I see in my own daughters, an attempt to try to make up for the sleep that they might have lost during the week, on the weekends by trying to sleep in, you know, research says that helps, but it doesn't necessarily one-hundred percent compensate for, you know, if there's sleep deprivation during the week. So important findings for, for me certainly as I was going through this, listening, learning from what they had to say, and so I came away thinking, this is something that we, we should take a look at. So came back, put together a group that I called the School Start Times Working Group. It was an internal group, it included teachers, administrators, it was our transportation director, director of EPA, athletics directors, principals, cabinet folks, and we met, but we met one time and I'll get to the reasons why in a few minutes, in a minute or two about that, but we got together to just have an open dialogue and conversation about this. We talked about what's happening in the area, you know, we've seen that Wilton has for years had a later start time and to do that, they had flipped their elementaries with their high school and done some things. I think they're about ten years in now and Greenwich has just started this year. We got together to talk about it and just to acclimate folks to some of the research. So I shared with them three of the presentations that I had seen and heard when I was in DC for that, for that conference because I wanted to start to build just some context and understanding and knowledge about that. We also at that point talked about next steps around research and we, we worked with Hanover to develop a study where we asked them to do a couple of things for us. We asked them to do some research, find some high-performing school districts that have changed the start time for their secondary schools, ask them if they've seen any positive results of those changes, anecdotally, or hopefully they had some evidence of that. We asked them to talk to those districts about lessons learned and we asked them to talk to them about the time that they've created for the secondary students by moving the start times, did they do anything to protect that time? Because there is a conversation that by, you know, you could go through all of this effort to try to shift start times and then things that typically happened in the afternoon might start happening in the morning and your students are still waking up at the same time and they're not really beneficiaries that you're hoping they would be of, of that change. So we wanted to get that feedback from those school districts as well. And so this group helped to develop some of those ideas and those questions and we had that open conversation. As a result of that, Hanover spent some time, hopefully I don't drop this off, I just have a couple of notes here and I'll share. Okay. Hanover reached out to nineteen districts that they had identified as districts that are somewhat similar to us and who have changed their start time. Ultimately, they collected data through in-depth interviews with the district administrators from seven of those districts after they sort of checked to see similarities and what have you. So in the interview, participants were asked about the decision-making process, about implementation and evaluation of changing school start times. After they did the interviews, they coded the results and then they drew out the most salient themes from their experience. So key findings in talking to other districts, and this was in the fall, in October that we received this back, that student health and wellness was the most influential factor to choosing to delay the high school start times, that overall, the districts are reporting a more positive overall climate as a result of the change and that parents' biggest concern was their, about their work schedules. But if we're going to change the start time for the high school kids and then consequently the elementary school kids, how does that influence and impact work schedules? When they looked at the implementation question, they found that transportation was the biggest logistical challenge because of having to change routes, look at additional buses, change tiers, do the things, and we've talked about that a bit. I'm happy to talk more if you'd like tonight. That the districts that are more successfully doing it are looking, they're really looking very carefully at their athletic schedule and working to schedule games that are furthest away later in the day. So they're trying to get, you know, work with those, those schools in order to try to start those, those contests later. And well, for implementation, it's important to gather as much initial support and of course transparency being the key to the process because it is a community-wide, it has a community-wide impact. So you, you want to make sure that the entire community is aware of what's going on and what you're doing. Considerations for us from our colleagues that have gone through this, focus on student health and wellness, be prepared to address the stakeholder concerns, and to conduct further research on changing start times to establish credibility. Direct comments came from us around this advice as well. One piece was, every district is different, every school is different, cultures are different. A school really needs to consider their kids and their needs and their policies and their programs and decide if it's the right thing for their district. This superintendent, who was a part of the research, recommended that we consider all the variables and all the constituents involved throughout the process. So it's sort of just saying what I think is pretty evident, right? One-size-fits-all doesn't work in this because each school system has its own complex structure. I use the term ecosystem, right? Each district has its own ecosystem of how it works, what happens before, after, during school, and what have you, and all of that is unique to that district and it all is related directly to the school bell times, starting of school, ending of school. When you think about what students do after school at all of our different, all the different ages, all the different levels. So it's sort of just saying what I think is pretty evident, right? One-size-fits-all doesn't work in this, because each school system has its own complex structure. I use the term ecosystem, right? Each district has its own ecosystem of how it works, what happens before, after, during school, and what have you. And all of that is unique to that district, and it all is related directly to the school bell times, starting of school, ending of school. When you think about what students do after school, at all of our different, all the different ages, all the different levels, and you know, you all know the long list of things that our kids do. So throughout, the communications has come in a variety of different ways. One, of course, has been the many articles and the papers that started really as early as August, and we've been talking about both the feedback from parents who've spoken with the board, but also I've given several interviews with the various news outlets, The Advertiser, New Canaanite, New Canaan Daily News, to share with them, sort of thinking about this topic, right? So that people could be kept up to date on what we're thinking, what we're doing. And of course, there's, you know, at this stage of what we're doing, there's not a recommendation to put forward. We haven't gotten to that point. But what we have done is, as the more we've learned, we've continued to say, this is important for us to learn about, and this is important for us to continue to pursue. And so that's what brings us here tonight. The, well, and there's other, certainly other communications as well. But the, I won't, I won't joke and call it the offending survey, but the survey that went out this spring was an attempt to try to get some feedback in a couple of ways. It was an attempt to learn from the various stakeholder groups, as advised in the preliminary research, what would their areas of concern be? From the students, from the middle school students, the high school students, what's their area? What would be their concerns? What would be their motivations to do it? From parents at the various levels, what concerns would they have? What would be their motivations? And from staff, what concerns would they have? What would be their motivations? By doing that, if the board thinks we should shift into a Phase Two and do further research and look at possible recommendations, then part of our work will be to be sure that we're at least acknowledging, if not addressing, each of those concerns. And knowing what the motivations are helps us to shape a solution that can be best suited for everybody involved. So that really, the goal again was not to say yes or no, do this or don't do this. The goal was to try to help us understand people's thinking a bit so that we could shape the next step of the process in the way that it could be most effective. So we were fortunate, we partnered this, or paired this survey with another one that the high school students were taking, and middle school too. So we were able to pull in results from 1,300 middle and high school students, from 1,100 or so parents' guardians, 379 school staff members, and only seven community members, which isn't surprising. And so those, those data I've removed out of this, because seven people is not a representative sample, right? But, but the numbers here are pretty good. You know, we look at the staff members and others, and again, we haven't had a chance to disaggregate on, at that next level to say, this is what high school parents say, this is what high school teachers say, this is what high school kids say. But, but we will be, and that's something that we'll be glad to share as we go, you know, in the, in the months ahead. So who, sort of the breakdown of this, and I just sort of covered this a bit, but when we look at our staff, most of them were the certified staff, a couple of non-certified school administrators, and, and a nurse. You see 46% of the respondents were students, 40% were the parents. Okay? So it's a relatively large sample, certainly of our kids, and then our staff as we look at it. Would love to in the future, find ways to have more parents involved as well. Of the students and folks that responded, these are students, parents, guardians, and staff, so you see that in the upper left-hand side. Of the 2,800 overall people, about half of them were connected in one way or another to the high school. The 36% is the middle school, and then a pretty even distribution across the three elementaries. So some of the questions asked about the respondents' perceptions of current school schedules, just to get a baseline. It's all that, that was intending to do. The baseline tells us when we look, and again, this will take, could take days to go through and whatever, I'm, we're not here to do that. But if you look at this, one thing that jumps out at me quickly, and all the graphs are built the same way, which is, the strongly disagree is the first, that color on the left, and then it's disagree, the gray is neither agree or disagree, and then agree, and then to the far right is strongly agree. So you sort of, the way I do it is just group the disagree and strongly disagree together, and then the agree and strongly agree together. And it just gives you a sense of things. So when they, people, when we get our feedback from students, parents, and staff about our current schedule, we see some discontent, right? We see that folks think that the schedule does not, and this is some of the criticism, and this is fair, does not positively impact my mood. Double negatively, double negatives and things are confusing in this. Does not positively impact my child's sleep, you know, and you can see some feedback around our current schedules. Continuing on. Again, limitations of the current schedule, and I do, you know, again, we'll disaggregate this by students, by parents, and others, just for more info. But you see that some of the things that jumped out here for me, the negative impact of the current schedule on time for homework, the negative impact down at the bottom on traffic congestion, I thought that was interesting, at the beginning and the end of the day, before school care, work schedules for parents and guardians. So those are perceived negative impacts of our current schedule, mostly high school kids, again, and, you know, the rest mostly middle school. So potential school schedules, you know, in order to be balanced, we ask questions about if we started earlier and if we started later. Now, again, it'll be very interesting to disaggregate this based on the elementary, specifically east and west, you know, versus the others. Because as we know, east and west has that 9:05 start to the 3:35 conclusion. So that is a later day. So I think some of the feedback around earlier days could certainly be coming from folks that are involved over at east, the, and west. But here, again, if school were to start earlier, the negative impact of that you see at the bottom. Positive impact, you see time for homework, participation in activities outside of school, work schedules for staff, and you can see those towards the top and others at the bottom. But, you know, I think from the feedback we've heard, I don't know of any district that's looking to start their secondary schools earlier than 7:30. So I've got to think that much of that feedback is from the schools that start a little bit later. The, if we, the perceptions of potential school schedules starting later, and this is number, page 29 for, on the bottom right-hand corner. Okay? So if elementary, middle, and high schools started and ended later, what do you think the impact would be on each of the following aspects of you, or your child, or your students' lives? And, you know, at the top, you see the more positive things. And down towards the bottom, you see some of the concerns that folks share. Activities outside of school, employment, work schedules for staff. The positives, they see before-school care, work schedules for parents, guardians, safety, transportation, others. Continuing on, if it were to start later, how likely would you or your child be to spend that time in the morning on the following? Overwhelmingly, three-quarters said they would be extremely likely to sleep more. And I think that that is supportive of much of the conversation and much of what we've heard from folks. Pretty large group doing schoolwork, and you see how that goes by. Certainly no one's interested in working. And you see that at the bottom. So when they, we asked folks the perception of potential school schedules. For each of the following, what change to start and end times would you recommend the district continue researching? So these are split, elementary, middle, and high school. And, let's see, so the much earlier, slightly earlier, slightly later, much later, no further research. You would, you see, and you have to look at it, I'm glad it's disaggregated that way, because you have to look at it at those three different levels. But certainly at the middle school and the high school level, we see most of the respondents somewhere between slightly later and much later. And a slightly earlier for the elementary. We asked folks, what are the three most important factors that New Canaan should consider when looking into this? And the three right across the top are the research on child adolescent sleep, time for homework, and timing of extracurricular activities. Those three far outweigh the rest. You can see the rest, and they're, they're all important, but certainly the preponderance of responses were centered around those three. So because they are a bit of a unique group, as the teachers here, their needs are a little different, I think, in ways. There were, was a question disaggregated specifically to staff, how would starting and ending school earlier impact? And for them, the most significant negative piece was their ability to find or provide childcare for staff that indicated they have childcare commitments. So again, that's an earlier start. The staff schedule impact of a later start, the concerns, and again, these are concerns, these are not put forward as barriers, but they're concerns that are worthy of consideration in any research and proposal that could come forward in the future. It's the ability to have a second job, ability to provide or find childcare, commute from school, and to be an advisor from, for a non-sport extracurricular, or to be a coach. So you see those, there's concern among the staff, and that's, again, I speak to the ecosystem that exists around schools, right? And this is the schedule that we have. And so thinking about a change in schedule and how it would impact folks is an important consideration for us to look into. Now, that's a little bit back to the beginning and that first round of research where, from Walstrom even in DC, where she said initially staff were concerned about how it would impact their lives, but they've seen a positive impact on students, and they say the positive impact on students outweighs the changes that they've had to make in their lives. So it may be a case of, you know, if a recommendation does come forward and come into place, that sometimes, you know, the anticipation of a change is much worse than the change itself. They even say that change isn't hard, it's transition that's hard. And so we would want to think about, how can we support folks through a transition if one does occur, so that they can sort of solve whatever problems they may need to Transportation to and from school. About half of our students are riding the bus, at least of our respondent students are riding the bus in the morning to school. And then the question was, if we started earlier, would you be likely to ride the bus one or more days a week? And that, those numbers seem, seem pretty consistent, that yes, and between yes and I don't know. The, coming home on the bus, again, it's about half the students, and about half the students say that they would, if it started later, that they would ride the bus. So those numbers don't seem to change all that much as I look at it for the respondents that we have. Extracurricular involvement. The, over on the right, which type of school-sponsored extracurricular activities does your child currently participate in? Out of 2,100 respondents or so, about two-thirds responded athletics, and then you see the performing arts, service clubs, and others. We are fortunate to live in, and work in a community with very active and involved kids, right? They're very much a part of the school-sponsored events, the town-sponsored events, and other things. And that's an important consideration as well. See? With an earlier start, would you be more or less likely to participate in any of the following? And the one that seemed to, you know, maybe negative was only a number of 87, where the other numbers you see are significantly higher. So I'm not, I wouldn't want to put too much stock in that one response, but there was a, specifically a school-sponsored publication. But you see, by all of the gray that I, when I look up and down this chart, you know, it seems to me that that wouldn't have much of an impact one way or the other, because the gray is the no impact, and that certainly is the dominating answer in all of that. Later start and end times? Again, you've got the no impact for the most part, but when you look at the ones that do seem to have the most impact, it's those couple at the top. And then there's some positive impact down towards the bottom around school-sponsored performing arts, and religious groups, and, you know, service clubs and things. But because the no impact, again, is so significant in all of this, I think that the participation in this, at least in anticipation of a change, that students, families, others don't anticipate that they have much of an impact. Childcare comes from the experience of changing start times in other districts. One of those things that may, you may not directly think of right away, but it's that question of, do we have students who go home and watch their brothers or sisters? Do we have folks that stay home until their child gets on the bus and then go straight to work? And if that child was getting on the bus 45 minutes later, would they still be able to do that, to be home with that child until he or she gets on the bus? Or would they need to find some, some other solution to that time? So it is an important question to ask. So for the respondents here, most of the folks said that they had some kind of flexibility with their schedules, where they could make a, a change, whether earlier or later with the start times. On the next, on the right, it's if your child's start and end time were later, how would it change your childcare needs? Out of almost 1,000 respondents, 184 said that if the child's start and end times were later, it could be very difficult or somewhat difficult to meet those childcare needs. So I do think that that is an important consideration in any research and any work that's done around this area. And then we asked students, do you help take care of younger children after school? And out of 1,100 or 1,200 students, 30% said that they do. So then they asked again, if school started, or ended earlier, or if school ended later, would it change your ability to do that? And out of those 356 students, you see that, what, 45% said it would be much more difficult or somewhat more difficult. So the childcare question is an important question that has to be factored into, you know, all considerations as we look at this as well. And that's when we talk about it being a community decision and a community initiative, it's very important. Again, no barriers, just important considerations. So we did ask questions about homework, and while that's a whole nother study, wanted to just share one piece of feedback. So the, well, this one page, so, level of agreement with the following statements by students on the left. I stay up beyond my normal bedtime to finish my homework. 43% say almost always. Now, interestingly, on the right, the parents are asked the same question. My child stays up behind her normal bedtime to finish homework. And 19% say almost always. Not sure what that means, but I found it interesting. But bottom line is, 1 in 5, if not almost 50%, say that they do that often, almost always. And that's, that's an important finding. I was very pleased to see the very first one on the parent's side, which was, my child can complete his or her homework independently, 60%. For no reasons related to start time at all, I just was very pleased to see that. But there's another piece too here that we have to continue to talk about and work on, which is, the second one on the student's side, which is, homework causes me excess or unhealthy stress. And that is something that we take very seriously, and we've been talking about, and we'll continue to work with our leaders and administrators, our teachers, our curriculum work developers, everybody that's involved, to be sure that we're balancing all of this with our kids. Homework's not meant to create excess or unhealthy stress. So we have to, we have to have those conversations and continue to take a deep look at this. But the homework question is important. And then sleep. Again, we've got some, some more research around sleep, but I wanted to just share with you a couple of things. The question on the left is, when do you, or does your child usually go to bed on a school night? And you can just see the progression there. And then, when do you usually wake up? And you see that half of our respondents are somewhere between 6:00 AM and 6:30 AM. And based on that research, at least, I was talking about from DC, for those students whose circadian rhythm does shift and they're really not able to fall asleep until around 11 o'clock, that, you know, that 6 o'clock time, according to the research I've seen, does seem to be a period of deep sleep for kids, where it's the restorative sleep, that's the consolidating sleep, and it's important for them and their, for their health. So that's something we need to look at. And then the bottom, the seven to eight hours is the majority of time. And that's okay for adults, but kids should be getting more sleep than that. So the recommendations from this, this study, and from some other, you know, work that we've done, recommendations from Hanover, continue researching a schedule with slightly later start and end times for middle and high school, slightly earlier start and end times for elementary school, prioritize student's sleep and time for homework in making scheduling decisions, exploring how other school districts have supported staff while instituting scheduling changes, consult further with stakeholders to develop the goals. Again, lots of text on the slides, apologize for that, but I Again, lots of text on the slides, apologize for that, but I figured it would be a good reference for the future for folks. Folks talk about earlier start and end times, that homework and activities outside of school could benefit from those. The drawbacks, work schedules, and before-school care. And that earlier start and end times would have, could have the negative impact on performance and participation in the publication, although again, that was a low respondent group, so I wouldn't overemphasize that. Later start and end times. Benefits, before-school care and work schedules for parents, guardians. Time for homework. And again, the finding that most folks are saying if they had more time in the morning, they would use it to sleep. And then finally, the staff scheduling, schedule impacts. They have more a positive view of earlier start times and much more negative view of later start times. And you can see some of the reasons why they have there. Finally, the childcare responsibilities. And 70% of students indicate they help take care of younger children after school. So in anything that's done, that's an important consideration. Okay. So, now it leaves us with a conversation, I think, that would be very helpful for me to have with the board, which is about sort of next steps a little bit. I think that, at least the research has shown me that this is an important consideration for school districts. That the science of it certainly seems to be pointing to a need for, you know, for schedules to be developed that facilitate student's sleep. I do want to also share, and I was at the, it was a May 3 meeting and conversation, it was very well done, I was very impressed by the speaker, that they did talk about, you know, the health benefits in school start times. They did also include, they talked about other things as well, it was a holistic approach. And I think that through the research that, that we've been doing, what I've been learning, is that that is the right way to do it. That it's, you look at, certainly look at your schedules, your start times, and how things work, but it's also to look, look at the homework, look at the expectations for students outside of school, look at the, what happens in the time that you've created. It's actually encouraging that so many say they would use that time for sleep. Because I've spoken with and learned from some other superintendents that have done some things, and what they, they've shared is, without kind of a focused conversation about that time, what happens is the things that happen in the afternoon can start to happen in the morning, whether it's meetings, extra help, tutoring, SAT classes, practices, those types of things. And so I think that that's an important part of the conversation. Another piece that came out, as we were in the auditorium, learning from the folks who really were very knowledgeable, was about device usage and how the circadian rhythm that we talk about and the melatonin that's released that helps you to get to sleep will be delayed if you're staring at a screen. And there are ways that you can adjust your screen by setting it to night shift mode, things like that, but it still will delay the melatonin release which you need in order to fall asleep. So they did talk about how that's also a part of the discussion, to help our students develop the healthy habits so that they can help their body to go to sleep at the most reasonable time. If students are watching Netflix on their phones or their iPads in bed or what have you, that's going to make it harder for them to fall asleep, because the light that's emitted from the screen will delay the release of melatonin in their brain. It is that, you know, it's that simple. It's the same thing in the morning when the, if there are blinds, you know, your shutters are open and the light comes through and hits you in the morning, it's going to wake you up, because that same light helps to turn it off. So it's, you know, there's a lot to this. There's a lot to research and a lot to discuss. But I am convinced that it's, first of all, I hope you can tell, I really enjoy learning about all of this. I see it in my own life, and I see it with my own kids, but as a high school educator and teacher and principal and all that I've done, you know, I've seen that there are some students that really do struggle in the morning. And so if they're, it's, I think, looking into this, developing some possibilities is certainly worth considering. I open it up for conversation with the board.
Thank you, Dr. Otzi. So why don't I open it up to the board for any questions based on the presentation? Does anybody have anything they'd like to ask?
Just a simple question, is this the full deck, doctor? I was missing some, some pages on the deck as far as, you know.
If you were, I apologize. Were there slides there that you didn't see?
Yeah, page 27, 28, 30, 31. Do they have it numbered improperly or?
Because I grabbed from other presentations and put it together, the numbering may jump around, but I can make sure that you have the complete deck for sure. I can give you this one.
Yeah, mine, I was getting it, I got all the sheets that we went through. Yeah, I don't know, you might not have got.
If you didn't, I apologize.
Yeah. Well, I got everything on there, but the numbers jump.
Oh.
Up top here.
Yeah. Okay.
Sorry.
Sherry?
So first of all, thank you for the update. There's a lot of information here to digest, and I think we have to note that we didn't, the board did not receive this presentation in advance of the meeting, so, you know, I do think that we need some time to digest this. But I think, just for the record, we as a board put this as a district goal, because we view this as a priority. I think we're all committed to, you know, the research and making sure that we get to a student-centered decision. And I know, I know that you're committed to that as well, and I think any type of inference otherwise is just incorrect. So I think that we should all continue to remain collaborative and positive as we work to reach the best decision for our, for our district. I guess one of the things I've heard often, and I don't know if you can shed more light on it now, is that for the schools that have moved to the later start times, Wilton and Greenwich and others, that they've, their student athletes have missed significant classes, end-of-day classes, to get to their sporting events. And can you just, do we have data on that, or is that something that still needs to be researched, or?
We have some data on that. And in the initial October research that we did where we spoke with other school districts, each of the districts said, it's inevitable, and when you make a change, that some student athletes will miss some classes. They try to minimize that in ways that they can, but the, and so it is dependent upon your league and your location in that league, you know, where are you situated? Are you close to your other schools? Do you have to travel a distance? Is there traffic, things like that? It's, it does make it particularly difficult, because every district is kind of, is at a different place looking at this. But the, I have not, I do know that there are, there are significant, it was significant in Greenwich, let me say that, from what I've, what I've heard. Wilton has been, you know, for about 10 years, they've had a later start time. They're probably in a better position in the FCAC just because of where they're situated, a little bit easier for them to get to other districts. Strategically, I think that you could try to work it out, as we mentioned before, about sort of schedule, trying to schedule later in the day with those teams that you have to travel the furthest with. But I think ultimately, when scenarios are developed and brought forward, they certainly may include the possibility of students missing classes, student athletes missing classes or others missing classes in order to get to competitions. And I think that that's going to be a very difficult consideration for the board and for the community. You know, as the superintendent of schools, I think that, well, I know the most important work we do is what happens in the classroom with our kids every day. So that's something we have to look at very carefully and pull some empirical data around. But I do know anecdotally that it does happen in districts that have changed their start time.
Okay, so, I mean, it sounds like we need more research around that and a few other things. So you're looking tonight for feedback from the board on whether or not we want to continue to research this? I mean, from my perspective, it's absolutely yes. Is there any scenario around which we can reach a decision by the 18, 19 school year? Or what's kind of the overall timeline that you're working toward on?
So the, the 18, 19 school year, no, right? And I think we've been pretty clear about, about that piece from the very beginning. But the, one of the directives that the board certainly could, could give would be to, for us to work with the team to put together a committee that would include board member, include community members, include all stakeholders, and to work with a consultant group to develop some scenarios that could come back to the board prior to the presentation of the 19-20 budget. In anticipation of that, we did start to collect some data internally. We looked at ridership on buses and things like that. We've just been sort of gathering info, just because in two weeks or even a week, we're not going to be able to do that anymore. So in anticipation of that, the board may ask us to move forward in that way, we wanted to be sure we were able to do that. So we are able to do that. We've looked at a couple of different consulting groups and some others, we've checked some references, and so we're, we do have somebody lined up, if that's the direction the board would like to go. And, you know, we're collecting the data that we'd need in order to do some preliminary work over the summer. The, ultimately, you know, I don't know what the answer's going to be, right? We, it's certainly, before we know the cost and the benefit, you know, I don't think it's wise to say that on this date, we want to make this change. I think that the charge to us and to the team would be to develop a couple of scenarios that do a cost-benefit analysis. That can then go before the board, go before the community for conversation. We can hold community forums in the fall prior to or right around the same time to share what the scenarios are, what those cost benefits would be, and hear some feedback. But, you know, this is something that, you resist the urge of going into this with a solution already in mind, because it's a very complex question about, you know, how do you do this and what's going to work? So, you know, some folks have talked about, well, what about a two-tier solution to the buses, or what about flipping this or flipping that, doing those things? And those all could be developed into scenarios, but really, we want to be data-driven with this, and we want to be sure that whatever scenarios we bring forward, they've been thoroughly vetted as far as what the cost would be, what the benefits would be, and then, you know, the board or the community can work to make the best decision. So we're, while the, this school year, the 18, 19 school year, certainly, we wouldn't be able to do anything around that, because there also is very likely to be financial pieces and other things. But we certainly could talk about making recommendations that could be implemented for the 19, 20 school year and having that decision. I would ask the board to, to not ask us or commit to making a change until the scenarios are brought forward in order for, to make the, you know, to see what the, see what would all, what would happen, how everything would be interrelated. Does that answer your question, Sherry?
Yeah, I mean, I, I for one am definitely in favor of us continuing to work this to get a budget solution, which would basically be November of this year, before the budget season, correct?
Right.
I mean, just to kind of.
Yep.
Find in, tune into what you're asking for.
Yep.
Brendan?
Yeah, I'm totally supportive as well to, you know, further study it. I think it's really important that we not just study everything, and I know it's incredibly complex, but really come up with, as you said, you know, scenarios that we could look at. You know, in particular, I think the town, to the extent we can really get the town kind of bought into this analysis, including around things like traffic, which impact really everybody in town, you know, I think that's important. I know that's not easy to do, but getting some, you know, external traffic studies, those sorts of things, which can also, you know, not only impact people who live in town, but impact, you know, staff who are traveling home later, possibly, you know, during rush hour even, depending upon whether or not they coach or do other things. So I just think it's, it's important that we, we sort of focus in on those scenarios and, you know, try to optimize as best we can. My guess is, there isn't going to be a single scenario that won't negatively impact, you know, groups of people. And so it's just a question of, you know, how do we get to the optimal spot, you know, for, for really everybody in town? You know, we're all here to focus on the children, but, you know, we all live in town and we have to focus on, you know, making sure we're not creating major other problems for, for people who live here.
And that's, that takes some really deep, careful thought, and I can just speak from experience where in a school district that changed its schedule and closed its campus with students, there were some small deli owners who actually went out of business because they were relying on the students' business every day. And so, and it, so it had a negative impact on that group in the community that nobody had anticipated would happen. But because of, again, that's why we think in terms of a sort of an ecosystem, everything is kind of built around each other. And so when you make one change in a complex system, you really want to think through how that cascades throughout. And so I think it's really important.
Anyone else? Jen?
So thank you for this. I know my kids would be very happy, but, but I agree, you know, we have to be very calculated in how we go about this. And I think it's so important that we have gone through this initial survey and that, you know, that we are, I've spoken to many parents, you know, they're, they talk about the transparency and they want to be able to speak and they want a forum and they want a committee, so I'm really excited that this is all happening. And I'm fully in support of, you know, moving forward and doing some research on this. And clearly, it's, you know, we want what's best for our kids and for our town. So thank you for doing this.
Thank you.
Maria?
I do, I'm a little disappointed to see the information that came out in October and, and some of the questions in the survey, very few shed new information on the issues. So what I'm wondering is, you know, with so many members in this sleep study group, how soon can these, can this committee be formed? How soon can the parents start having, having a voice in the solution? Can it happen over the summer? Can we?
We would probably, we would target right in the beginning of the school year in September, knowing the complexity of people's summer schedules and also the, sort of the preliminary work that needs to be done in conversation. I think that the consultant that we've been talking to would come in and have some, and interview some folks, and I think that's an opportunity for some parents to be involved in those interviews. But as far as the committee getting together and sort of formally meeting, we would target September for that.
I would also consider looking at a different survey, maybe finding out from the, the group what questions they didn't feel they could answer with this one. Maybe there's other issues that may be an open-ended type, you know, with Google, the forums, it's pretty easy to do, so I'm just, that might be very helpful.
Yeah, I think there'll certainly be other opportunities for feedback, and if it's through a survey, we'll certainly do that. Thank you.
Sherry?
So just on the, on the committee, I, to Brendan's point, I do think it's important that we get some town representatives on that, so that we're bringing them along in the process and that we have, that there's some town, you know, someone from Board of Finance, someone from Town Council who has a deep understanding of all of the research and the process, so that when we actually enter then into the budget season, that, you know, that there are people that can, have been coming along on the journey with us. Also, just on the survey front, the one thing I would like to better understand for the teachers and staff saying there's a negative impact is, you know, to really better understand that negative impact, is that something that could actually negatively impact our recruitment and retention of our teachers and staff? You know, how, you know, so when they say, is that an inconvenience, or is that something that is actually, you know, a career, you know, impacting decision? Because, like you said, it's an ecosystem and we need to make sure we really finally understand the impacts of this, so.
Yeah, certainly will.
Brendan?
Yeah, just on that point, I mean, I almost feel like it's hard to do because of how many staff members that we have, but you almost have to have, you know, detailed conversations with some folks, you know, if it's really going to be a negative, such a negative impact. We don't want to start losing, you know, some of our best, you know, teachers and administrators just because of a, you know, a schedule shift. And I hope that that would never be the case. But without having some of those conversations, at least a representative said, it's hard to be on probably a survey, because, you know, a survey is sort of high-level at the end of the day. I think it's going to be tough to, you know, drill down on, you know, one specific scenario.
Right. Thank you.
Katrina?
Just another question related to the survey. I, was this the same survey that other districts took, or?
It was adapted. Because some of the other districts had that yes/no question.
Okay.
So there's, should we or shouldn't we change, and by how, by how much, and those things? And I just, I felt that that was an unfair question to ask, because I don't think the, the education has occurred for people to understand why it would be important. So I don't like to ask if unless people understand kind of costs and benefits and why.
Okay. Because I guess my, my thought is just, in relation to the other high-performing districts that we're looking at, is the data, is our data disproportionately higher or lower? So for example, I was thinking about the question with the teachers that have a second job, whether they're coaches or doing tutoring before school, do we have a higher rate of teacher involvement with a second job? So I have a lot of questions to Sherry's point about the staff impact here and just understanding the impact on before and after-school activities for our kids too, and at the elementary, middle school, and high school level. But I'm fully supportive of moving ahead, full steam with research.
And with, if we're, you know, putting together a representative committee would mean that some of them would be, would be teachers, right? And so they could be tasked with collecting some of that information and talking to their peers and then bringing that back to the whole group as well. So certainly to better understand, and that's part of the purpose of this, was not to bring, raise answers, but to raise questions, right? So that we understand what's the next step for research? What do we need to learn? What do we need to consider? What do we need to consider in doing this and putting proposals forward? Because we, without thinking about the different lenses that people have and different perspectives, bringing forward a, a solution, so to speak, or a scenario that doesn't account for those things is really, is not a recipe for success.
Tom?
I just want to say that I'm fully supportive of moving forward on this initiative as well. And more of a comment than a question, but I'm very interested to see how other districts have weighted the primary consideration here, which is student health and wellness versus these secondary considerations. Very interested to see, and you might call traffic, for instance, a secondary consideration, but very interested to see how they make the decisions based on sort of a weighted consideration of a primary versus a secondary issue. So, looking forward to seeing that.
That's a good point.
Hazel?
I think all the comments that have been brought, I don't think this is a.
Hey, Sam.
I'll speak louder. I think that all the different types of answers and questions have brought in different groups, which I think will make the survey just as reliable as we want it to be. And I think this is certainly a good way to do it and to go about, certainly the advice that you've sought from people who've gone through this and continue, as everyone's asking, continuing to ask for that advice and what are the things that would be surprising us. But I think the layering of it is really important, that it's not just one group of people that are being asked, it's a lot of different people.
Thank you.
Sherri?
So, how, how do we get at the holistic nature of what we're talking about? Which is, to your point earlier, that, I mean, the school schedule is but one part of a, you know, very multifaceted day in the life of a student. And even the survey results would show that the students, you know, 60% of the students say they stay up behind, later than their bedtime doing homework, but parents say only 19% of their parents are realizing that. You know, how, how much of screen time is actually affecting the sleep cycle versus, you know, the, the number of the start or end of the school day? Like, how do we get at that holistic nature to make sure that, in the end game, that we are solving, you know, the, the problem?
I think about that often. Because the worst thing would be to go through and do all of this and really have high hopes and expectations and then have it not meet those goals because of other pieces. I think it's, it's a combination of things. Certainly, the, the school start time and end time is an important piece, but it's not the only piece. I think the high school needs to continue and middle school and the other schools continue their conversation that began recently about homework and expectations for students outside of school. I think we need to plan some professional learning, both for our staff and for our community, for our parents, to talk to them more about the screen time piece and the, you know, balancing and making it, you know, making good, helping kids to make good decisions about those things. I think, so I think there's, there's the technical, right? And so, they, without going too far into theory, you know, Ron Heifetz out of Harvard has the technical change versus adaptive change, right? And the technical change is, gosh, you know, it's kind of warm in here, let's make it cooler by turning down the thermostat. Okay, good, now it's cooler and we're all happy. You know, the adaptive change is changing behaviors, philosophy and approach in response to whatever the challenge is. So, this is, changing the start times and doing nothing else is trying to apply a technical solution to an adaptive problem. I think it has to be part of the solution, if possible, but there are other ways to go at it too. And that is, we're thinking about the homework, thinking about expectations for kids, thinking about screen time, thinking about activities, talking about, you know, all of those other pieces of, of the ecosystem. And then you can drive at a change in behavior and approach. And that ultimately, prioritizing student health, that ultimately is how we get to that goal. So, it's a lot of work, but we've got a variety of different groups, all, you know, if we, again, use that as the, as the leading goal, the health and well-being of our students. And it's, and the board has been amazingly supportive of that from the start. You know, we look at our goals, we look at, you know, Goal Four around student health and wellness and all of that. So, we've been very, very supportive of that right through. But I think that the goal shouldn't be to change the start time. You know, the goal is student health and wellness. Looking at start times is one of the ways we get to that. And I think that helps us stay framed on the bigger picture. And it's only a start. It's a, it's a great question and a great challenge.
Maria?
I completely agree. It's a, totally a holistic solution. And this is pretty much where I think you need to keep parents really in the loop as far as getting feedback on things. You know, one thing that came to mind is the, the midnight deadlines for homework that's submitted online. So, it's the kind of thing like, maybe we need to not do that because a lot of kids will stay up till midnight to hit that submit button. So, those kind of things, if we keep parents more in the loop, we, we are the first line of defense with the kids at home. We know what's not working with them, you know, so keep us in the loop.
Definitely.
Other questions?
I just have one quick one, because I think everybody's been, you know, very thoughtful about, you know, how we want to proceed. And it sounds like, you know, we'd all like to continue doing the work and, you know, I agree, you know, it sounds like September would be a time to pull people together, because you're right, trying to get anybody to do anything in the summer. Everybody's summer schedules are very different. I, I do have a question about a transportation study, because here we are in June, and so, a transportation study that starts now is not very effective. So, you know, if, if we were to do something in September, how, how much time does a study like that take? Because we really do need to have that commencing in September, October, when everybody's full-on, you know, in work and school.
Sure. So, what, when, what the data collection that we've done is looking at the ridership of our buses.
Okay.
And that's already completed. So, we did, we did it in May.
Right. I'm looking at more, you know, we have a, a unique problem and Greenwich has the same problem. You know, we have a, an area of congestion. And so, I think part of the study needs to be that area of congestion, what the impact is on, on the bus schedules with a change. Because, you know, from what I've heard, Greenwich is having a, a real problem in its, in its transportation as a result of the shift in the, in the start time.
Sure.
So, I would like to see that to be part of whatever the group does. Because, you know, I've heard from members of the community that, you know, that work in the community, that they're very worried because they have, that Farm Road, South Avenue area is, is a, is a bottleneck here. And, and then you, you, you push it out to Main Street and you push it out to, you know, 106. Those areas of town need to be really looked at with a lens to the entire community. So, I just, I want to understand how, one, do we have enough money in the budget to, to retain somebody to do an effective traffic study? And, and how quickly do you think those kind of studies can be the results of them?
Sure. And the, the brief answer is, the group that we're talking with actually is already, they, not for this, but in the past, had done a traffic study for another purpose in New Canaan. So, they're actually, they are already familiar with New Canaan a little bit.
Okay.
So, that's helpful. I think you're right, to do it now, certainly to do it in the summer, wouldn't make any sense. And we do have that, it's not unique, but certainly the challenge of Farm and South and the three schools that we have here, and the size of those schools, right? To have two, your two largest schools and then, you know, a large elementary school there. Now, we have the advantage of the sidewalks and the walkers that help to maybe alleviate some of that traffic. But, yeah, it's something that has to be done. Probably the best time to do it, it's going to be that second week in September, third week in September. But the people we're looking at and talking with are very hands-on, you know, would be here on-site, would be talking to our folks, would want to. They'll be, you know, watching the bus runs, they'll be looking at the traffic and developing that. So, I, I don't, I don't think that's a very long turnaround time.
Okay.
And I certainly agree, it has to be another one of the considerations in any scenario that's brought forward.
Yeah.
Again, not a barrier, but it has to be a consideration.
Okay, that's great. Okay, well, so, I guess, sounds like, and, you know, if I'm not summarizing the board's views, please correct me, but it sounds like we'd like you to, you know, continue to move forward with the, you know, idea of having a committee of, you know, community members, board members, parents to commence in, in the fall. And, you know, we'll progress from there. And with an eye to have some kind of information before November of, you know, the budgetary impacts of, of whatever recommendations we bring forward. I guess we probably will have to have, I mean, and we could talk about this in September, but there'll probably be multiple different budget scenarios.
There'll have to be.
Yeah.
I'm not aware of a district that made a change like this that didn't have a budget, budgetary impact.
Yeah.
Some, so we have to, I think each scenario would probably have a different impact based upon the, what solution it's bringing to bear.
Okay.
But.
Do you envision like a Greenwich-type proposal where you have three or four different proposals with the budget implications for each proposal?
I do. I think that that's probably the best way to do it. But more than the budgetary impact, I think it has, you know, the variety of different impacts based on all these considerations.
Right.
We've been talking about.
Right.
So that, because that's certainly a piece of it, but there's, you know, there are a lot of things to consider.
Okay.
So, you know, it's going to be, we're going to want workers on this group.
Yeah.
And, but I'm confident that we've selected the right partner to help us in doing this.
Yeah.
And it's, once we get the ball rolling and we've had the conversations with them but haven't committed anything until after tonight's conversation. So, once we get that ball rolling, I think we'll cover some good ground in the summer that helps inform this group and facilitate their work.
And maybe after we have some various proposals out there, you know, maybe a different, a community forum is something that we can.
Yeah, we've had that conversation too.
Yeah.
And the group is going to help to do that as well.
Okay.
And they find, again, there's, there, one of the things they really focus on is that community connection, conversation. I mean, to be frank, you said the way a superintendent can do this and lose his job is not talk to people.
All right.
So, you were there.
All right.
And I really like this.
[laughing].
I want to stay a long time, so.
Good.
We're going to do it right.
There's been too many transitions in this area.
We're going to do it right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to the district goals review in.
Do you want to tell people they can leave if they want?
Yeah, I mean, anybody can leave if they want. I don't think they feel obligated to stay. So, the district goals review for the administrative team, or by the administrative team. I don't know who's going to be doing that, so.
I think it's on you.
Your name was expressed, so I'm like, who's doing that?
So, I'm going to give Dr. Lutzy a little bit of a break.
Yeah.
He's only been up there for two hours. So, we'll, we'll give him an opportunity to take a breather. I'm going to start with the progress towards the district goals. And I know that he'll chime in and certainly any of the other cabinet members will chime in when it's pertinent to them. And certainly, I was taking copious notes as you were all talking and suggesting ideas which will probably help to come forward with a new district goal in regards to this. So, and I know we'll be presenting new district goals at our next Board of Ed meeting, so. So, thank you. So, what I thought I would do is I'd just go through each of the goals and the objectives briefly, because so many of the presentations throughout the school year have really concentrated on these district goals. So, hopefully, you've had an opportunity to listen to all of those presentations and as we start talking through them, you'll probably remember them throughout the course of the year. So, first of all, the goal number one is really to increase student learning as measured by multiple and varied assessments to ensure all students graduate prepared for dynamic and complex global society. And objective one is really talking about the district curriculum, instruction and assessment. And certainly, the CLC continues to meet monthly to review, revise and write curriculum. These leaders then work with teachers to unpack units of study and to assist with that implementation. They've worked hard to develop common assessments that connect to the units of study and emphasize higher-order thinking. We utilize the depth of knowledge to really do an in-depth study of our assessments. We're looking at the actual questions that's, are being asked of students. And we really take a close look, how many Level One kinds of questions? Those are the recall kinds of questions, versus how many Level Four kinds of questions are on that assessment. The Level Four is where you're really looking at that extended thinking and really want them to apply it to other scenarios. And so, we do take some time to do that. The teachers really have been working hard to come together and calibrate those common assessments. And we believe that all of this work that we're doing is really helping us to prepare for not only the next-generation assessments, but ultimately for our students to, you know, compete in a dynamic and, and complex global society. I think one of the next steps that we're excited about is so much of the work has been done at a K4 level, 5'8" level, 912 level. So, I've challenged the English Language Arts leaders, so the department chair at the high school, the 5'8" ELA coordinator, as well as the reading coordinator and writing coordinator at the elementary level, to really start taking a look at what would that look at a K12. So, they're prepared. This summer, they're going to be coming together to create an anchor set of student writing exemplars for each genre of writing, whether it's a narrative or information or argument or literary analysis, and really look at that K12 vertical alignment and really want to ensure that the expectations that we're asking of the students are, are building throughout the grades. So, that's very exciting work and that's just some of the future work that we'll be moving on. When you look at objective two, Mr. Egan and Mrs. Rivera recently completed a Board of Ed presentation about the graduation requirements. And certainly, the next step, as Dr. Lutzy had suggested, would be to establish a committee that's really allowing us to explore the vision of the graduate. We're going to continue to work on the scheduling, look at studying and researching and make updates to our schedule when appropriate. And obviously, this is an area that we'll focus on and certainly as we develop more and look at more in school start time, it may be something that we're going to need to dive more deeply into as well as we talk to other school districts that may or may not have made those changes. When we look at objective three, which is really talking about the STEM initiative, we've done multiple presentations this year in the area of STEM. Oh, I'm sorry, I did forget objective C, but that will be an area of concentration as, that was Dr. Lutzy talking about the school start time. So, we did do our, our research and our report on those best practices. But moving into objective number three now, we've done a variety of presentations on STEM initiatives throughout the year. You've had the opportunity to hear from the CTE department at the high school as well as Melinda Meyer in regards to the next-generation science standards as well as standard-based grading. We provided professional learning for all of the high school teachers regarding the next-generation science standards and how those science standards fit into the various sciences, like what does that look like in biology? What does that look like in chemistry? And we've begun that professional learning and really the next steps would be begin to revise that curriculum and probably take a close look at ninth grade and maybe even look at that course sequence starting in ninth grade and what would that look like? And so, that would be the next area of focus for us. You've heard a lot about the standard-based grading. I think all of you gave us some great recommendations and suggestions for future study on grading, so you can expect to see something in that regards on the next, next district goals as well. Moving into objective four, I think Jonathan's been a regular here at the Board of Education meetings, giving you several presentations on health throughout the year. We are really excited. We're putting the final touches on the units of study for third and fourth grade for next year. And we are planning on rolling them out. We're working through the scheduling details and, and what that will look like for each of the elementary schools. And we are really doing this with our current staff and our current schedules in place. And, and we're very excited to begin rolling that out and we'll be able to start something that we think is going to be very proactive for the students. As we move into objective number five, Mr. Salvastrini has come to the Board of Education twice this year and once he was joined by Mrs. Hannah, who really gave us an update on the digital citizenship. The department has really worked hard to differentiate the professional learning for staff. And certainly, we're ready to dive more deeply into what does that transformation of learning really look like in classrooms? Try to get into classrooms, do observations, start to capture that on video so that we really can start to share that with all of the staff on board to give them a deeper understanding of what that looks like. When we take a look at even all the work that they've done, they've really done a lot of collaboration with department chairs this year, as well as the coordinators, really taking a look at units of study and ways that they can integrate in with those units of study. When we take a look at the D under objective five in regards to scheduling, we've really tried to explore a variety of ways of scheduling at the elementary level, and we've had some success. One of the things that we did this year was we made librarians free when second grade was actually instructing reading. So they didn't have classes coming to them when the second grade at a building was teaching reading. That allowed the librarians to collaborate with the second-grade teachers to go into the classrooms and really work on some collaborative projects. It also opened up the library for teachers to bring the children down to the library. It worked incredibly well when we were doing research units of study or units on nonfiction. We did the same with our tech integrators at second grade as well in the area of writing, and so there was a lot of integration in that regard. So we'll continue to research that and really work collaboratively in regards to ways that not only the tech integrators can work with the units of study from a general education perspective, but also how the general education teachers can learn about what their standards are, and ways for them to integrate those librarian and technology standards as well. We continue to make progress on our digital literacy citizenship. As Mary Hannah shared recently, you know, it's always being tweaked based on teacher, students, and current topics. Certainly in regards to the learning management system, you know, at this time, unfortunately, we'll probably be holding off on implementation of the learning management system for next year, and I think that we'll go through that when we go through budgetary suggestions. But obviously, in the meantime, we're going to continue to move forward with Google Classroom and Moodle at the high school, and we're not going to lose sight of that. And we're going to continue to stay meeting as a committee and continuing to look at that hopefully for the future. In regards to objective number six, that really relate to RTI, the district continues to follow the RTI guidebook that was created several years ago, and the committee continues to meet regularly to discuss process and areas of growth. This year, a subcommittee worked very hard to proactively identify and help students who might be struggling socially, emotionally, and behaviorally, and that work will continue into next year. We're also going to be looking a little bit more deeply at some of the writing center and the reading courses that we offer at the high school as, as a way for RTI as well. When we look at the ELL, we currently have 59 students who qualify for ELL services, and this number has really grown in the second semester of new arrivals to our district. We are really happy to report, however, that we're going to be exiting 23 students from ELL services this year. I think you might recall Lizette D'Amico talking about that they have to take the Lost Links, which is a test, and it became online this year, so we were a little nervous about students taking that. But they've done quite well, and they'll be exiting services starting the fall, and, you know, we're, we're really pleased with those numbers. When we look at objective seven, moving into our study with world language, this is the one objective that Lizette D'Amico hasn't come forward to the Board of Education to give an update, and that's mainly because most of the information is being gathered in the springtime. I can give you a little bit of information that I've, I have. Currently, we have about 81% of our students participating in world language at the high school. So what we're discovering is that probably most kids take it for three years, and then when you dive a little bit more deeply into why are they not taking it a fourth year, it's often because they want to open up their schedules to take more electives. However, when we think about our biliteracy seal and the number of kids that will be graduating with that biliteracy seal, we're predicting that that number of four years in the foreign language is going to grow as we, as we continue to make students informed about that. When you look at the sixth through eighth numbers in different languages, it's interesting to start with eighth graders, because it gives you kind of a perspective of how things have shifted slightly. We currently, for the incoming eighth graders for next year, we'll have 65 in French, 112 in Latin, 22 in Mandarin, and 115 in Spanish. And then when you look at those incoming seventh graders, we're going to continue with about 66 in French, 120 in Latin, 34 in Mandarin, so the numbers are jumping up a little bit, and then 95 in Spanish. And then when you look at the incoming sixth grade, it's very interesting, we have a flip to 90 that want to take French. So those numbers are growing by about 30 students, and then the Latin numbers have decreased to about 92. Spanish still remains about the same, and then the Mandarin's up a little bit at 37. So we continue to track those numbers and survey students as to why they shift taking the language. One of the things that we do, will need to keep looking at, is really that opportunity for what we're going to do when our current ninth graders hit seniors. So we don't go past a Level 5, and so we're really going to need to think deeply about what will our ninth graders take when they hit seniors, because we had a large group of our ninth graders come in at Level 3. And that is true to our FLESS program, and then certainly the integration of what they're doing in the middle school. And we've done a lot of research in that regard, and we think that we'll explore some more options next year. Some of those options would be that you could offer another version of AP. You could certainly take the UConn class and make it a Level 6, or you could write your own UConn class and, and put it out for a proposal and have them accept it as, as a class as well. So we'll be looking more deeply at that next year. One of the most exciting pieces of information that we have is when we look at 7B, where we're talking about how many students are really speaking and graduating with, you know, the knowledge of that language, and we're really pleased, because this year is the first year that we're going to be able to offer the biliteracy seal, and we have 266 students who will be getting the biliteracy seal that either sit as a junior or senior. So we have 140 of them are seniors, and 126 of them are juniors. And actually, we'll be increasing the rigor of that objective, because in order to graduate with that biliteracy seal, you have to end at the intermediate level on the Apple or the Alara, which are the two tests that we utilize, but you have to do all four portions. So you have to not only do the speaking, but you have to do the listening, the reading, and the writing. And so we have kids who really want this biliteracy seal, and will pass two portions of it, and then actually take a retest and do the two other portions. So we think that's going to be positive, and we'll rework that objective. And then we're still waiting for the results from the eighth graders when they took the Apple, so we don't have those for you. So I don't know if you have any questions in regards to goal number one. If not, we can shift into goal number two.
Any questions? Okay, keep going.
Good, so as is apropos for our goal conversations, goal number one is the majority, and we'll move a little, I'll talk briefly about our communications goal. So the district goal around communication is to improve achievement, service, and relationships through communication that is responsive, clear, timely, and inclusive. You know, certainly, social media provides a challenge for everybody these days in communication, and the, recent research talks about there being about seven minutes between event and communication out before misinformation starts being disseminated, and, and then you spend your time trying to correct misinformation instead of getting out the, the clear information. Seven minutes is a tough bar, but we're learning, and we're doing, I think we're doing a very good job in this area. The, our communications director and team is part of our crisis advisory board, and together we work out different communications protocols when things happen. And as we learned this year, you know, unexpected and sometimes tragic things happen, and being able to communicate with a community, being able to help people to understand what's happening, to make good decisions for themselves and their own well-being and their children is really important for us, the school district, and that's, you know, all of that falls under the, this umbrella around communication. We also put in here an opportunity to talk to the Board of, Board about the importance of social-emotional learning and well-being and student success, and I hearken back to our board retreat back in September, where we talked about the positive psychology and emotional intelligence and those things together. There's also, you know, the use of the website, which we do daily, and what we've done this year is begin meeting on a district level with our, our content managers of each of the buildings in order to develop clear protocols, and that's overseen by both Mike and Matt. And they work with the folks who are responsible at the building level for the websites in order to bring a consistency of message and, and protocols around updating and information and things that are there. So I think that's helping us to use that tool more effectively. We also are looking at some innovative practices. One of the things we've just recently done, and I think I just recently shared with the Board, and I will be sharing with the community, is take clips of presentations that are shared with the Board of Ed, and break those out from the general meeting, provide a brief introduction, and then put it up onto YouTube, and then share it with the community, so that folks can see some highlights of presentations and conversations that occur at the Board level, because I think there are so many important pieces of information that are shared with the Board, such great discussion that happens, that if we can grab it and package it based on topic, I think we can really get the message of the district and the message of the Board out to more people who may not be inclined to watch the entire meeting and sort of stumble upon it, but instead if we package it and send it out for folks, I think that'll make it much more accessible for them. Finally, you know, certainly I mentioned social media at the beginning. We continue to look for creative and successful ways to use Twitter to communicate our positive messages. You see that happening at the elementary, middle, and high school level, to varying degrees because of the age of the students and what they're doing, but, you know, more and more, I think it is helping people to recognize the great work that goes on in our district and to, to be connected a little bit more, especially at the secondary level, to that work that's happening in and out of the classroom. So I know the administrative team here is doing it, I know at SACS, the administrative team's doing the same, and even at each of our elementaries, they're, they're using that as a tool to get those positive messages out. So we are working to be as timely and responsive as we can, and as we said in the beginning, communications is one of those things that, it's, you're always on some part of, of a continuum in, in your work in this area, but I think we're well-positioned to continue to improve going into the future.
Goal number three is to promote and support innovative and exemplary research-based professional practices in order to continuously enhance teaching and extend learning. As you'll recall, Mrs. Wallach and myself did a presentation to the Board in regards to TEPL, the Teacher Evaluation and Professional Learning Plan that we abide by, and that is part of our state mandates, and certainly, within that, we provide a lot of professional learning, not only to our teachers, but also to our administrators. We spend extensive amounts of time doing calibration and making sure that when we're doing walkthroughs, what does effective teaching look like, and certainly looking at the indicator level in regards to possibly feedback or questioning. We really dive very deeply into that. Any new administrator that comes on board goes through some training as well, so that they're just as calibrated as the veteran administrators, and we conduct many walkthroughs together. One of the area that we're continuing to work on is really the coaching of our next layer of leaders. So what does that look like for a department chair, what does that look like for a coordinator, what does that look like for a reading specialist or writing specialist, math specialist? Because not only do they spend time helping teachers to have a deep understanding of the curriculum, but they work very difficult, you know, very hard with the teachers on that differentiation of instruction, and how to address all those learners within those classrooms. So not only are they the content experts, but they also need to be experts in that evaluation system. And what do they look for when they go into classrooms to help teachers to grow? And are they giving the same kind of feedback that an administrator might be given, so that it's not confusing to a teacher as well? We also spent a lot of time this year working with our ICT department, so when I was talking about the project that our ICT was asked to do with, you know, with collaboration with department chairs and coordinators and second-grade teachers, what does that look like? How do you design that calibration? How do you sit down and unpack that unit of study? How do you get at what it is that you want the students to be able to do? What is the outcome for those students? And so we spent a lot of time training our next layer of teacher leaders in that regard as well. Certainly, as we move into our professional learning communities, that's a big part of our teacher evaluation and professional learning. They all create goals based on what they see as their strengths and what they see as their areas of, of growth. They work in teams, on study groups. We use our professional learning hours before school, those one-hour sessions, for them to come together and meet across disciplines, across grade levels, and really look at an indicator more deeply, or participate in a webinar, read a book together, and get together and have those conversations, and we support all of that work that they do. And then certainly, at the last Board of Education meeting, we gave you that brief update on Tri-State. We are completed with our check done. You won't see that continuing for next year, however, you might see some of those recommendations and some of the objectives that we're creating. Moving into goal number four, I'll, I'll turn it over to Mrs. Pianka.
I would just remind you that Dr. Bliss did a presentation at the last Board of Education meeting that updated you on all of the goals, and in your minutes from the last meeting, the responses are highlighted under all the goals and objectives, and I won't go through all of them because they're there. I will highlight that the goal in the coming year is that we will review the school climate survey data that she discussed, and we will set new goals for the school year based on the, the, the data, and that will also be doing the rollout of the anchor tools. That'll be taught to our students in grades K through 8, now that we're finished with the staff orientation to the tool, and look at some parent education programs for next year in terms of providing them with more information.
Sharon, just to, to add, we are continuing that conversation around the district-wide program, which they, it's a really great partnership with the district and the PFA and the PTCs. This would be our third year going forward, so we've done it for the last two years with Mark Brackett and then Dr. Brooks. And so the, I know the parents are excited about finding, you know, another speaker to come in to help us to continue that, those efforts, so it's really great. The part two of this goal is focused on safety and our security plans. Just very briefly, again, you know, we are hosting this summer what's called an Alice training, and I know, if you think back to November, Joanne and Steve Bedard, Joanne Rocco, Steve Bedard, had gone to training this, the past summer, and really found it to be an impressive approach, and an effective approach, and it seems to be more and more that this is, it's the right approach, certainly for secondary students and teachers and those involved. So we have over 40 people signed up at this point for the Alice training that we'll be hosting over at SACS. We did open it up to folks from other districts as well, and if you'll recall in the meeting, with our SROs were sharing that they weren't able to attend some training and some other things, so we worked with the group, and for each 15 people that we had sign up, we were getting, we were given two free slots, and so we're giving those slots to our SROs so that they can participate with us as well. So we're looking forward to that. It's a two-day training over the summer, and then we'll have them report back to the Board as well. But it's that continuing to research and implement best practices, and this Alice approach really seems to be, you know, an effective one, and something that's highly recommended by those in the field, so. We will end, we go on to goal five. I think, well, just last meeting, we had a thorough review of goal five and the very good work that's going on in that area. And so we'll end it there unless the Board has any questions or discussion.
Any questions?
Tom?
Just a comment again, sorry, no question, but I'm just constantly impressed with how well these goals and objectives are cascaded down through your organization, through, from the administrators to the staff, all the way down to the custodial level, the people that work on the buildings, they all understand these goals and objectives, and you see it every time we gather and hear a presentation from a group, they always reference these goals and objectives. They always have them in mind, and again, it's just awfully impressive how you have everybody working from the same playbook.
Thank you, Tom.
Thank you. That's great. Anyone else? Okay, thank you, Dr. Lutzy.
My pleasure.
Thank you, everybody on the industry. Okay, moving on to our budget discussion.
I'll get it started, and then anyone who would like is welcome to jump in. So we've been working since the conclusion of the budget process to identify the opportunities for savings in order to hit that $900,000 number. We, as you know, we've been kind of waiting a little bit to see what insurance might do, we've been watching enrollment carefully, we've been, you know, looking at a variety of different, all of these different factors in order to, to come up with our best recommendation for the Board going forward. As you know, again, you know, budgets for Boards of Ed, they are itemized estimates. You know, we do our very best to be as accurate as we can in every number and everything that we put in there, but there are, there's variability in many of the numbers. So we have to budget in the ways that we think are most likely to occur, and we have to be, you know, very, very careful with all of that. So I'll just very quickly go through the list, and we can, we'll certainly open up for discussion. So we've been looking and watching our enrollment very carefully, and what we're looking at at this point across our elementary schools, we believe that we're going to be able to reduce our elementary staffing by four teachers across the district. That's, it's based on the enrollment that we have today. We're looking, we're really very actively calling folks about anyone who's requested information or what have you, so we are really actively managing this as much as we can, but we believe that we'll be able to reduce by four. This reduction does, on our current layout, give us two positions that we can put where we may need to put them based on where the enrollment comes in. We have a couple of grades that are right at that 20 number, so while you don't want to break them yet, you have to really keep an eye on it, because if we lose a couple, you're, we're fine, but if we gain a couple, then, you know, we'll be over the guidelines and we'll have to split those. The, you know, this is, while not aggressive, I'd say it's not conservative either. I think that, you know, it's very, it's likely we're going to need two. You know, we're... You know, we're optimistic we wouldn't need three, but if we do, we would do it and have to figure it out. But going and looking at the budget, looking at our enrollment and understanding the need that, to hit this 900,000 number, we felt that this was the best, the best to put forward. With the, this 4.0 reduction, we, every class, if we just started school tomorrow, would be within guidelines. So we're also able to increase our estimated turnover savings by the amount you see. So it's, as you recall, when we built the budget, we built it with 100,000 in it. So we're able, we believe that we're able to build in another 107,000. Now that's, of course, we're still in the process of replacing people who are leaving. So again, that, that's where we're talking about itemized estimates until we know for sure, but we, again, believe this is our best number to put forward. I'll let Joanne go into more details as you like, but number three is, I think, really impressive work by Joanne and her team and what's happening around our operations and document reproduction. I'll simply go to the bottom line, and then, you know, again, Joanne's welcome to talk about more details. But the, the savings for that good work that's been going on with Joanne and her team and the process, the bidding and everything that's happening is an ultimate savings of $121,000. And you can see kind of what each of those individual items are, you know, as you go through. We've looked at our workers' comp premiums, and there's some savings there, and you see the number there. We also had those 10 maintenance projects that were in the budget, and what we're looking at doing is to accelerate where we can based on where we end the budget year with as we sort of kind of pull accounts together, and then defer some others, you know, and maybe into the next years, we might be able to do a few more. So we'll try to kind of winnow away at those as we can, but it's, you know, it's a large number for savings when trying to get to the 900, so we felt it was the right thing to do. We're also restructuring a couple of departments a little bit. We are restructuring our digital learning staff model. And what we're doing with that, briefly, is going to a model at the high school where we have two library and media specialists and one technology integrator. And then at Saks, we would have one library and media specialist and two technology integrators. And we're doing that because we believe that the model will best fit the use of the space and the system that we have in place. If you've been to the high school library media center, you know it's alive and bustling and hopping each and every day. So to have two librarians in there makes good sense and support, to work with the kids, to work with the staff. And then have one TI who can float to the different areas of the building and throughout the disciplines, work with our science environment and math, all the others, makes sense because we're in a BYOD environment. We've got teachers who are relatively tech savvy in a variety of different ways. And that one person, I think, we think, I believe, can provide the support needed for that. At Saks, it's a little bit different. The middle school model doesn't have the free time in student schedules where they can just go down to the library, right? They're scheduled more than that. They don't have frees. So what happens is it's, it's really classrooms that are scheduled through the library when it gets used. So to have one librarian there to work with those teachers as they come through makes more sense because of the utilization of the space. But at the same time, the infusion of technology into Saks last year with the Chromebooks in all the humanities classrooms, the work we're doing, really benefits from having two full-time technology integrators there where they will work hands-on with the students, with the staff, and help them to do the integration of those devices that the board provided just last year. So changing that model a little bit, it's, right now, the model is, it's additional staff at the high school and at Saks, so it really was, it was two librarians and about one and a half technology integrators, let's say. And at Saks, it was two librarians and one and a half technology integrators. But, so by doing this, we're reducing one FTE in the department, so 1.0 position. And there's a transfer to an open spot for that one person that, that makes it all work. So there's, there's some attrition. We're able to make a move, balance out the support model, and do it in a way that really, instead of saying that they need to be models of each other, the systems really should be in place to support the learning that's going on in the buildings. And it's going to be a little different at a high school than the middle school. So that was the, the thinking and the, the approach around that. There's some savings in the extended school year program, both the redevelopment of that, and believe it or not, by going an extra day saves us a little bit of money because that's a day we don't have to pay for the staff to be in the ESY program because we shorten the program by a day. And that's the 25th. We're reducing a teaching assistant across the district. We're reducing this health office teaching assistant, and actually, that work is shifting over to a nurse that we have on staff. So we're, we're shifting the work and saving some money. And then, as Jill mentioned before, we're looking at deferring the learning management system and deferring this media management system, which ultimately, we believe both are good solutions for the district. But in an environment where we need to find the resources to reach the, you know, the reduction, we had to make some hard decisions and think that the, given the initiatives that are underway and given the restructuring of our technology support, that this is, it's a good year to continue to research a bit, to use the resources that we have. Jill mentioned Google Classroom and Moodle and others. We'll continue doing that work. We'll continue looking at ways our website can support the learning, and then we would still put it on the table for, for the future. So those are the, the budget reductions. Now, I can pause on this, and then we can flip it over and have a discussion on the other side.
Does anybody have any questions? Brendan?
Yeah. First of all, you know, very impressed with the work that's been done. Clearly, a lot of, you know, detailed work and looking into, you know, many different departments and areas. Just one question I had on health insurance. Where are we in terms of, you know, recent trend and experience as we head into next year?
Sure. I'll let you make your.
Sure. We've met with Joe a few times to discuss the claims activity over the last few months. We've had some slight improvement this current year of about 100 to 150,000 over a two-month period. So we're going to continue to watch it. We may end up with a little bit more money and fund balance than we had projected at budget time. It's not a significant shift, but it could, it is improving, so that's good news.
Okay, great. And then, can you just walk through a little bit? I know you did it a bit, you know, what was that, two weeks ago? On the printing contract and just, you know, what those savings were? There's, there's a bit of detail here. It would just be good to understand that a little bit more.
Sure. Historically, we have contracted out for our copying services, and that's included the, the staff that's manned the copy center. And so we went out to bid. We were at the end of a seven-year contract, believe it or not. Copy equipment is good for about four years. So it's, it was in desperate need of being replaced. Went out to bid, and we started to really peel back the pricing on the bid and segregate out the equipment, the maintenance and the staffing, and realized that it was less expensive to in-source the services. And to really drive more of the copying to the copy center, currently, we're only at 17%. We have a goal to go up to 50%. So all of those different initiatives should help us reduce our cost. And we have hard prices here, so we should save at least, well, we will save at least 120,000 a year. And beyond that, we can even reduce it further as we reduce the number of copies that we take. We currently are 11 million black and white, 750 color, so we're working on getting those numbers down.
So this is, this is $120,000 of savings on a $400,000 budget?
Right.
Okay, that's great.
And those are savings per year?
Yeah. That's excellent.
Yeah.
And then, I was just adding up the deferrals to next year. It looks like it's about, it's the 100 and, sorry, it's the, yeah, 103,000 of maintenance plus the 45,000 of learning management system, and then 18,000 of media management system? Is that?
It's 166.
Yeah, okay.
Yep.
Great, thank you.
Jen?
I just have a quick question. So for the reduction in the, in the teachers, I know you said that, you know, it's, you never know, it's always fluctuating with enrollment and stuff. So I'm assuming that we would stay at guidelines for our class sizes, correct?
Yes.
Like if something did happen and we needed to put one of these teachers back in to maintain our classroom size guidelines, that we would do that, and then?
Yep. And you know, those decisions occur over the summer, and we make them as late as we can because we want to be as close to the start of the school year. But we, we have to open our school year with our full complement of teaching staff because it's, it's always awful if you try to split a class once school year starts, as you, as you know. So, yeah, we, we're driven by the class size guidelines, and it's our goal, and Gary really does his best to hold us to it every year, to stay within those guidelines.
Okay, great, thanks.
And just to piggyback off that, if, if we did need to have an additional staff member, we'd have to find savings somewhere else.
Right.
Just so everybody's aware, that doesn't come without a cost.
Right.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay, thank you. So why don't we move on to that page?
So, yeah, just again, briefly, to touch base on this. So the alternative school is something that has been in the budget, and through some good fortune and some great planning and conversation, we are bringing it forward as well to get it off the ground beginning next year. The, and if, I'll very quickly run through this with you, but what we've put forward is the original plan, and we may, because of the, the scope, the size of the program that we're talking about next year, we may reduce even a little bit, like the teaching assistants, others. But again, this is where when you budget and put these plans in place, you want to do so relatively conservatively because, you know, if you wind out, if you don't and you need to have the money, you have to take it from somewhere else. So we're, you'll see that we've been a little conservative in, in some of the planning here. But, you know, we talked about our, the three FTEs that we've discussed throughout the process, which was the regular ed teacher, special ed teacher, and social worker. And again, the regular ed teacher isn't really a person who is certified in every discipline, but it would be woven in and out of staffing that exists already, both at the high school and even at Saks. And then the cost for a one-time startup with some equipment and supplies. Now, the rental of the facility and utilities. So our total cost on the startup of the program would be the $336,000. Which the great news is the cost offsets include the movement of the funding that we use for the afternoon instructional program, the AIP at the high school, and that's the 62670. And then anticipating one out-of-district expense, so one tuition student no longer needing to be tuitioned. Now, there's possibility we may have more, but again, we want to be conservative in our estimates and certainly as we get off the ground and going. So those total up to $122,000. The, so the net cost of the alternative school program would be the 213. And the funding plan, the budget allocation, that, what we currently have in the budget is this 117, 121, and then the health insurance costs that you see there. So that is already in the budget, and that takes that down to the 173. And that takes it down to the 39,000, right? Right, thank you. The 173, 213 minus the 173. Now, good news is that Darlene and her staff has been working with our neighbors next door, Dariann, to place a student from Dariann Public Schools into our launch program next year. And in conversation with their superintendent, Dan Brenner, we've agreed upon a tuition cost, and that student is, I believe, scheduled to begin in the fall. Yep. And it's, you know, congratulations to Darlene and her staff and the meeting and PPTs, everything else that it takes to make that happen. As you know, our launch program is for students 18 to 21, right? So that transition, they're finished with high school, but we helped them to transition from school and build the skills that they need to, you know, for life afterwards. So that tuition of 45, netted against our, that 39,636 cost that's still there, actually brings us to 5,300 to the good, just getting the program off the ground. So we're really excited about it. I think we got fortunate in the, the space that became available for us, and we're, we're looking forward to getting, getting this off the ground and saving the board, the towns, more money, and serving our students and our families in ways that are best for, for them and for us.
Okay. Any questions? Mr. The Board? Brendan?
Yeah, I mean, I just wanted to comment that I find this absolutely amazing that we're, you know, pulling this off in the context of, you know, having to reduce the budget request by $900,000. The creativity, the, you know, just, you know, the drive that your team showed in pulling all this together was a little bit of luck in, in getting the space. But, but it's just, it's excellent, and I think the, you know, the town and the, you know, the kids in the program are going to be better off for it. And I think frankly, over time, as we've shown with the longer-term forecasts, there's likely to be ongoing cost savings, which, which should be very helpful.
Right. Thank you.
Any other questions? Maria?
Do you anticipate this generating revenue at some point? Significant revenue?
Well, what we anticipate initially is saving, that costs that we're currently incurring for students that are going out of district, that we can bring them in and save. As things get off the ground, when we began launch years ago, we'd said that ultimately we would look to see if we could bring in students from out of district and tuition. So that model could work here as well. But I think our initial startup is for the New Canaan students and trying to educate them here in town. But certainly, it's, it's a possibility as the program evolves and develops.
Another issue, I was reading about Greenwich having to rebrand their alternative high school. Is that something, can we, do you know, can you report on that? Why they had to do that?
Sure. And for us, it's an alternative program, right? It's not a separate school. We're not creating a sixth school because there's, there's a lot that goes along with that. So it is, it's a program of New Canaan High School. The, you know, it's, part of it is helping people understand what purposes an alternative program serves. And it's easy to misunderstand that. So it's important for us to communicate that, you know, we're like, these are for our New Canaan students who, for whatever reason, are having a hard time in school. And it's going to provide them with a high-quality educational experience. They're going to be graduating with a New Canaan High School diploma. You know, so I think that it's important for us in that branding question, and I know the team at the high school has been working very hard on that. We have our afternoon instructional program, you know, and we've got, we have students in that each year. So it's not a brand-new concept for us, but it is, I think, a more comprehensive program and a richer experience for the kids. So we just have to, yeah, it's a part of the process as we roll this out.
So their declining enrollment in their alternative high school, you don't foresee that here, as long as it's branded properly?
I believe what we see is a, is a need that's been increasing over time, and I think that it'll continue to increase, both here and throughout the region.
Would we ever consider partnering with the local, there's several alternative high schools within like 10-mile radius of us. Is that an idea, to regionalize?
I've had some conversations with, with other superintendents around. The, there's a real, a real limitation to the number of seats that are available because several of them are just kind of getting started, like Dariann next door. This actually grew from a conversation that Dan Brenner and I had a few years ago. So they're just getting off the ground too. The, you know, beyond that, I think the distance traveled is a challenge, and I think that the cost savings that we talk about a little bit, you know, for a district to be able to run it in New Canaan for New Canaan students, if we're paying a tuition out, there'd be some differential in, in savings, let's say, but, but I think that the, the costs would be significantly more than what we're talking about now.
Any other questions? Well, thank you, Darlene and Dr. Lettsi, and the whole team that, you know, worked on this, getting this off the ground. Because I know, you know, I mean, we put this forward at the budget season, there was a lot of town interest and support. It just, you know, they couldn't get their arms around the outback at the town. So I think, you know, it was a well-articulated and well-supported idea within the community. And so I am really thrilled for all of you that it was able to become a reality for next year. So, great job. Okay. So moving on to comments from the public. Is there anyone who wishes to address the board? Yes, sure.
Thank you, guys. We are genuinely thrilled that the topic of later school start times is being discussed in depth with all the relevant parties. I am confident that as a community, we can and will do what is right for everyone. But just to add some incremental insight for Board of Ed members, administrators, town leaders, and other parents, much of the compelling data that Dr. Lettsi has shared with us today, along with case studies, tactical plans, additional research, and success stories are readily available. We formed our parent committee a little over a year ago. We've created an informative and interactive website and Facebook page. We've reached out to sleep experts and set up a community-wide educational panel. While our long-term plan must address New Canaan's specific needs, we are confident that enough data exists already that we don't need to completely reinvent the wheel. Having followed this process very closely for over a year, it seems a bit unrealistic to think that the solution options can be completed by November for the 1920 school year if starting the, if we start the process in September. The work presented today, for example, took about a year to develop. The next step is even more difficult. I asked, I asked Dr. Lettsi and the Board of Ed, can we not get started as soon as possible instead of waiting until September? How can we utilize the energy and focus of our committee to start answering questions now? What can we do this summer? What can we do this summer? We are at your disposal, and please let us know. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to address the board?
Two minutes, Dave.
One minute.
You have two minutes.
One minute. Put me on for one minute.
I'll take thirty seconds back from last time when you went over. You only get two minutes.
All right, I've taken a lot for that.
Starting now.
Don't start again.
Starting now.
David Ritchie, I just want to thank Dr. Lutze, that was very well done, and we appreciate it. Just a couple of things that I wanted to bring up. I think we can be somewhat proactive right now as well, like just with our sports programs. I mean, we should talk to our sports people and say, hey, if Greenwich wants to, if we, we should try to accommodate Greenwich later if that's what they want. I think it might just be something that we should do as a community to help others, regardless of what our decision might be today or whenever it comes out. That would be something that we should go out and do, and we should not, we should not force them to come up early, we should actually try to work with them. And then just the only other thing I would say, as far as the waited, goes to Tom's question, Cronin's question, I mean, I think we have to start with, they need more sleep, teens need more sleep, and then we have to backtrack from there, and how do we get there, and what's the right time for that? I don't think that we can be like, well, this transportation is more than the sleep. I just want to be clear about that. I mean, we really believe that sleep is the most important part, and that's really the most important thing that we should start with, and then backtrack from there. How do we help teachers? Yes, we of course have to do that, okay? But I think it will work itself out. Just quickly, my friend down in Greenwich, I asked him about it, the Vucases, I talked to him about that the other day, and I said, what happened down there? And he said, it was miserable for the first month. It was an absolute disaster, everything down there. And I go, he goes, then, you know what? We all just got used to it. He goes, things changed, everybody changed, we figured it out. And in the end, I go, he's got three boys, he goes, they love it. It's an extra hour. Thank you.
Thanks. Anyone else?
I know where everybody's fired. Ten seconds. Just to his point about the gentleman that he spoke to from Greenwich, when we presented our later sleep time experts that evening, a gentleman approached us and came, and he was from Greenwich, and he was a Greenwich parent that came to hear our sleep experts, and all I had heard was the negative coming from Greenwich, which was disheartening, to say the least, and he said, I gotta tell you, despite the rollout problems, it has been amazing for, for us. We are very happy. Now, of course, he's just giving his perspective, but it was very interesting and uplifting to hear a very positive. He said, no doubt, it took some getting used to, but my daughter is much better off this year than last. So just something positive.
Thanks.
Okay, anyone else? All right, seeing none, we'll move on to announcements and future business.
Sure, so our next Board of Education meeting is in two weeks. I've asked Dave Gusich to join us, just so we can welcome him as SACS's new principal. I'm hoping that our new assistant principal will be able to join us as well from the high school, but she told me today that she has graduation that night, so if she can get over, she will, but if not, she won't. We'll play that one by ear. We are going to go through a first read of our goals and objectives for the 18-19 school year. I've asked Mr. Regan to put together an athletics update to talk to us a bit about highlights of the year, and I know he wants to share some feedback around the hiring process and what has you, have you. So Jay is working on that for us. We anticipate having Series 4,000 ready. There's a signature authorization, statement of accounts, and in that, we are looking to go into negotiations beginning in July with our very first meeting, which will, just kind of set the calendar. We're going to see if Tom Moody's available to come be with the Board Executive Session to, to talk strategy a little bit and to talk about commitment around that and what have you. So we will have another full meeting.
Okay, thank you. So if I could get a motion to adjourn to executive session in accordance with Connecticut